Every public body shall give notice of the date, time, and location of its meetings other than special emergency or continued meetings at least three working days in advance by posting such notice on its official public government website, if any, placing such notice in a predominant public location at which notices are regularly posted, and placing such notice at the office of the clerk of the public body, in the case of a public body that has no clerk at the office of the chief administrator. Reasonable notice under the circumstances of special emergency or continued meetings shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the public body conducting the meeting. Ms. Tanner, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, Dr. Giffen. We will place that as a guideline to ensure notice was provided for filling all faculty in the chapter.
Great, thank you, Ms. Tanner. I duly call this meeting to order. So, we had planned to hold off on taking a group photo until Ms. Smith arrived, but since Ms. Smith, you're here, we're going to go ahead and take our group photo now. The Virginia School Board Association does a back-to-school photo that they put out throughout the state, and they asked for our board to take a picture so that they could put it in their campaign welcoming students back to school. So, we were going to postpone that till the very end, but I'd like to go ahead and get that done first, if we could. So, if we could just come right at the front of this table right here, and Ms. Tanner will take our picture, and then we'll get started with the meeting.
Get somebody to hold the sign for us.
I don't want to tie anybody, though.
Well, you can hold the sign. Hold the sign. There you go. Yeah, there you go. Oldham Mill style. There we go.
It's crooked. Yeah, like, yeah, there you go.
There we go. Okay. There we go. Thank you.
Nice.
I remember last time we had to take that picture, I wasn't able to be there because I was in the hospital having a baby, so.
Who is?
Yes. All right. So, well, welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for coming, and we have a marathon meeting today, so we're going to get right down to business. We're going to start with Ms. Tanner calling the roll.
Bassin.
Here.
Camson.
Here.
Clanton.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Jordan.
Present.
And Gabriel.
Present, thank you. As we discussed before, we were going to begin adding a little bit more structure to our work session, and so what you see here are some bold subject items and then the supporting material underneath of that. This is going to be the pattern that we have for our work sessions now. So, the items that you see in color here will be the headings, and then the material underneath it will be the areas that we discuss at our future work session. So, we'll see how this works, and hopefully, it will do very well. So, starting off, we're going to begin with setting the direction for the division with the school board accountability plan. Dr. Burksong?
Good afternoon. When we met last during the school board retreat, there was a discussion related to the school board accountability plan and some revisions that the board wanted to make to the plan. And so, it's my understanding that Ms. Camson is the board's lead with the school accountability plan, so this afternoon she'll be presenting the revisions as requested by the board during the retreat. Ms. Camson?
Thank you. Could I get the clicker?
Ms. Tanner, could you?
It's all right. I'll get it.
Does it work? Can it work from here?
I think Dr. Bailey is right there on a table.
All right, while he's doing that, let me just go ahead and get started. As you know, back in March, when the school board approved the new accountability plan, there were three priorities that different people had concerns about. One of them was one that I had a concern about, and so, we'd had long discussions about it, and then we agreed that we would continue those discussions during the retreat. And people were going to bring some stuff in. I don't think anyone kind of got around to it, but so, in July, a month ago, we went to the retreat, we got a nice block of time, and we went through the same discussion that we had had in March. And we didn't reach any decisions then, so it was pushed to today. So, this has been three times, and isn't anything that we have to change, but it was just an effort to get everyone in agreement with each part of it, so that we're all on board together. So, those three priorities, and you should have them, they came, they were posted. Since we had a little problem following along, I corrected my delivery, so that now you all have a copy of the accountability plan on board docs, you also had a copy of the list of the proposals, and then we have a quick little PowerPoint that we'll go through. So, I'm going to run through them quickly. I know I've got the clock ticking, and hopefully, give us time to have a little discussion. So, we're going to start with... All right. Isn't it that thing I point to?
No.
There it goes.
Okay, I'll do it.
All right. Goal one, priority two. This is increase the percentage of high-performing schools is the priority, is priority two. The discussion that we had had to do with, because I spent a lot of time thinking about the different points of view to try and bring a good compromise that I hoped everyone would be comfortable with, and the point of the priority was to recognize academic, recognize, celebrate academic excellence with the high-performing, for the high-performing schools. But other members of the board had a very legitimate concern, and that concern was that they wanted growth and improvement and academic progress also recognized, because if you're in a school in a high, one of our high-poverty neighborhoods, they have a lot of challenges. All those children, all those children can become proficient, but we have to give them a lot of extra support. And so, we wanted to recognize also improvement, academic improvement. I hope I've captured the concern there. Well, I really thought about it a lot, and then Dr. Burksong gave us the solution without even realizing it. She announced that the VDOE had created a new award, which was recognition of the most academically improved districts in the state. And she also announced that here in Norfolk Public Schools, 10 of those schools, of our schools, were recognized with the new VDE, VDOE award for most improved. So, the recommended provision for priority two is increase the percentage of VDOE most-improved schools and NPS high-performing schools. And of course, once you start improving, that's what you're headed to, high performing. So, that's the recommendation for this one. And what would happen on the accountability plan, and it isn't there yet, because why go to all the trouble together? Plus, I was on the website the other day forever, and I couldn't find the criteria that they were using. There's a lot of good information on that website, but it sure is hard to follow sometimes. All right. So, what will happen is, we have the high-performing, and we can pull those down, and we have the most improved, but once I get the criteria, that will go into that piece, and I can certainly put that one first, so that we can celebrate high academic achievement, the way we celebrate high athletic achievement with all of our athletic teams. But at the same time, we're also, at an even higher level of an award, recognizing those schools who have a lot of challenges and yet are among the best-improved schools in the state. All right. So, now move on to the next one. Try and get through these quicks, so you have time for discussion. All right, goal one, priority five, and this is increase educational options and opportunities. And the concern with this one was, it's not an accountability plan. Here's a goal, here are our targets to reach the goal, check when we get there. And that was difficult. I thought the options and opportunities, there are a lot of charts there, net data that we needed. I thought it fit well in other places. However, what came to light that I hadn't really thought about was a member said, you know, what we're trying to get to here is equity. Yes, that was such a, that was good for me, because I was right on board then. And so, when I'm, what I did here was, I just changed it a tad. Provide educa, we still don't have those hard goals, but it's something we need to focus on, and that's what a priority is. Provide educational equity options and opportunities. Now, this is going to take some work on the accountability plan to really get this in. The U.S. and State Departments of Education really judge how you're doing with equity by your closure of achievement gaps. So, that's data that could be used here, and that's just something that's going to take a little bit more talking and all, but that's really going to make us focus on equity, which is something that every single member of this board is highly committed to. So, that was the change for that one. The last one, which doesn't fall under a goal, it was, and I know it's busy on there, but you have it on your sheets, and if you're on your computer, you can look at it. This was the one that's been around for about five years since Dr. King was here, become a board of distinction. And it lists, and this is from the State School Board Association, and they list a number of things that are very concrete. You just go by check, 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 and you earn the award of distinction, becoming a school of distinction. This was the one that I didn't like, and I didn't like it, because I thought, you know, once the schools improve, as the students improve, that's the reward that we have. However, Mr. Jordan said to me back in July, he said, "You're missing the point here, and it's not that I'm trying to get an award. I'm trying to help us improve the way we operate and with governance." And that made perfect sense. So, what I looked at here, this is a suggestion.
I'll do it.
Yeah, oh, it did work.
I'll just do it.
All right. So, this is, the change, what I did is, instead of looking for an award, I put as a suggestion or as a recommendation that it now strive to improve relationships and increase governance capacity, which I think is what we're trying to get to. And so, if you look through these items, and you can hold them side-by-side on your sheets, though it was already too busy to do it side-by-side here, but what I did is, I went in, a lot of the stuff is exactly what the State School Board Association recommended for theirs, but I added one thing. I added at the very beginning, "Board members will participate together in at least one relationship-building professional development session and four governance-training professional development sessions." Now, we're already doing the governance, having some scheduling problems, but we're already working on that. We started that last year, and I thought a relationship-building one is a recommendation that I make, because I felt that that would help our board. If you go down to the next one, "Board members will participate together in a two-day summer planning retreat session in July, which would give us a chance to get caught up in stuff," and we already do July retreats, so that's not really anything new. A lot of this now is exactly the same. The board will conduct mid-year annual superintendent evaluations, mid-year and annual. The governance team will fully implement the new board accountability plan. There was strategic planning there, and that's something we can come back to, but for right now, this is where we're going with the accountability plan. The next, number five, six, seven, eight, even though it has a seven, two sevens, seven, eight, nine, 10, all straight, no changes at all. And then, when you get to 11, deleting the statement which says, "They had a long list of conferences, and they wanted this board with only seven members to have two people at every single one of those conferences." That's a lot of conferences, and a commitment that, I mean, I can't go to six and seven conferences. So, instead, what I did is, I put, for number 12, I'll get back to that one, number 12, that each member of the board would attend at least two of the recommended conferences from the state association. And then, back at the new 11, the governance team, board and superintendent, and this is one that Mr. Clanton called me on Monday and said, "Are we doing something about community and family engagement in our, in our board goals?" And I said, okay, so I added, "The governance team, which is the board and the superintendent, will ensure the full implementation of the board accountability plan, goal three, priority nine, to attract and retain strong community partnerships and strengthen family engagements." It's right off the accountability plan. And then, and then, and then number 12 now is the one about two conferences a year. Doesn't mean you can't attend 20, but at least two. And then, number 13 is the one that was already there. The division will participate in the SBA Take Your Legislator to School Month, already do that. The SBA Media Honor Roll, this is new. This is recognizing a member of the media who have good relationships with the board, who spotlight good, yeah, whatever, you can, and then there's the business one, which is honoring a business that does a lot of work. I don't think we've done that before. And then, the bullying month, we already participated in bullying month. So, that's basically the changes. Hopefully, that leaves me time for board members to have a discussion. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Camson. Are there any members who wish to comment on the items proposed?
Yes. Well, first, just on the presentation, on the, I know that you shared with us the PowerPoint, were there any changes that were proposed to be made within the other document, the plan itself?
None, none, none came up. These are, these are what was remaining from the original vote in March for the accountability plan as it was, was accepted. But in my mind, I kept these three priorities that people had concerns about and said that we would discuss them again.
To be determined.
In July, which we did, and then again here today.
Thank you.
Ms. Bassin?
Well, I had, I had other comments, but to Mr. Jordan's point, so, what I noticed in the accountability plan itself, that there were, there was a change to add decrease dropout rate to priority eight.
We, and we didn't...
That change was...
That change was made because the board, by consensus that day, everybody said, that was, that was, I left it off inadvertently, because we know that that's a state requirement for accreditation, and, and so, we asked everyone on the board seemed to be in agreement, because I would make no content changes without the board's agreement.
Okay. Well, yeah, and I know we talked about it, but I just noticed that that had been updated in, in the plan. And as I thought more about it, since we had that discussion, and then looking at, you know, how reports have been generated even by the state, I feel that priority eight has become like a catch-all for everything that isn't, hasn't been prioritized somewhere else. So, the decreased dropout rate, I would, I, you know, would continue to advocate it either being its own or included with increase on-time graduation rate and decrease the dropout rate, even though those two are different, two different rates.
Okay, and that's something we can consider for another time this time.
Right.
We're going to keep, we're going to be looking at these three that were left over from March and July.
Okay. And then, my additional comments are around priority two. One of the suggestions that I'd like to bring forward as well, I know we, we seem to agree as a board that having some sort of recognition of high academic achievement is important. I would like for our, since this, since this accountability plan is for this year, is that our priority may be to develop, to develop a definition and process for determining high-performing schools, so that we have time to really talk about what that means to us. Again, I feel that, you know, the accountability plan, while I know the state accountability is reliant on SOL scores, I'd like us to be more inventive and aspiring to a higher level in terms of what we mean by high performing, because SOL scores are minimum. And with that, I think, you know, we talked about in July last month, we talked about how student, how bringing in climate, items from the climate survey. How do teachers make us feel? How do our principals make us feel? There are other aspects that I think we need to consider in our definition, and I want us to be deliberate and thoughtful about what that definition is.
And I appreciate your comments there. What I would like to say is, high performing, maybe the word academic should be put in there, because that was the point of this, and why we're bringing in the improvement was also for that. It was high academic performance, so that parents understand what we mean. And, and both in March and in July, I did ask everyone to bring me different charts and different ideas, and I would like to say that I did not receive anything. So, I did this work...
I've shared that.
...without that input, because both times, members of this board said that they had things that they would send me, different kinds of charts, different kinds of research, and I did not receive them, and I went on with this, but I'm certainly glad to add the word academic to make that clear, because the improvement includes a lot more of that kind of stuff.
Right. Well, I know I've, I've brought it forward before, but my expectation too in July was to spend more than 20 minutes on this, and that we, as a board, and not, I don't believe it should be, our accountability work should be a committee. I believe it should be the work of the entire school board, and that we should spend dedicated time to work on that, but...
Bassin, could I just say to that, that this is our third meeting over five months. We had very long discussions, both in March on these items and back in July. So, there's a time that you have to move on.
So, let me ask this question, then.
Okay.
Can I? Hold on one second. So, if we change the recommended priority, Ms. Camson, you said you would, we would put academic in?
Well, yes, to clarify it, high academic performing schools.
High academic performing schools.
Because that's what it is. It's to recognize, like with athletics, you recognize the highest athletic performance, and we celebrate those for our schools. Well, we should also celebrate academic performance. High academic performance is...
Okay.
...our goal.
Okay. Final comment, and then we're going to go to Mr. Clanton. You had a question, right?
Yes. And thinking more about item number three, we talked about, about this, but in looking at the plan, I would also like us to devote more time to achievement gaps and what that means, because based on the plan, I saw the targets we're in, that we would have zero, you know, have basically no achievement gap in 2024, I believe. And I think to get to that point, we have to first consider, what is it we're going to do to reduce those achievement gaps? And I would like us to focus on what that is, and have that be a priority.
Can I say one quick thing to that? I thought the board's role was to do policy. We want achievement gaps closed, or close as close as you can get them. The how-to was my understanding over the past year, is that's the superintendent and her senior staff will be telling us how they're going to do our policy, that achievement gaps need to be closed.
Right. But when I say that, I don't mean the tasks related to it. I mean, what policies, what barriers are in place that exist in our division rooted in, you know, we have an equity policy. How, we haven't had an equity scorecard, for instance, on each of our schools. I would like to see that. I would like us to prioritize using the data, so that we can either revise our policies, allocate resources appropriately to close those achievement gaps.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I would like the focus to be on that broader piece, that we are reducing...
I don't think that we haven't, I don't think that we haven't had that as a focus, and so, it is going to be up to us.
Absolutely, she's right.
I'm just saying, I would like that articulated in, in that priority.
Well, okay.
Because the plan looks like it's saying we're, we're...
It's difficult, it's difficult to bring suggestions to the table when Ms. Camson did ask for members' input, and the input that I provided was, I'm comfortable with the suggestions that she had.
I got that.
And so, when you come at the last minute, and you bring forth the suggestions, good, good. I'm not just saying that they're not good, but then that, that carries over the discussion, and so, I think that Ms. Smith had brought up the point of unfinished business, so I'm taking notes of that. This is a fluid document. If we want to come back to changing that priority around so that it's worded differently, I'm happy to do that. But I don't think that just because it's there and that priority doesn't mean that the board isn't working on it. I think that is honestly a huge focus of where we are and the work that we're dedicated to, policy changes, budget changes. I mean, we went through a whole budget process where we were trying to put teacher specialists back in the budget to help close those gaps, so...
And, and, and plus, this, this is a living document, and this is what we will be doing every year at the retreat. This is a five-year plan, but every summer, we will be taking a needs analysis...
That's right.
...as we did when we developed the initial plan, and we will be making, it will be constantly being updated every July, like any accountability plan is.
Right.
But how many times? Five months now.
Right. So, let me go to Mr. Clanton, because we're going to keep things rolling.
Okay, sorry.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to, and I'll state this, I agree, Ms. Bassin, in the respect that we have to keep focused on that.
Absolutely.
And these items, when we talk about achievement gaps, and about the high performing, and the definition, which is where my question lies, Dr. Bailey. So, in the, some of the, I know we have the scorecard, and we have the color that we're using, and I remember in some of the two-by-twos, there were some defined levels that would get you to the yellow, to the green, and the red. So, that's kind of a definition of giving us, you know, where we get to those particular areas, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I guess if we can kind of spell that out, that would kind of answer some of these things here, and then kind of doing a deep dive regarding around the achievement gaps piece. I know that we have some requirements that ESA has in place when we talk about achievement gaps, and so, making sure that, that comes forward. But I just wanted to say, and so, I appreciate that, that I appreciate the work. I mean, I think that the board, and keeping in mind that when we get here, it's good to, we got to have discussion about action, and then taking action, and I think that we tried to divvy things out to committee and to assign it to individuals to kind of do the work, so that when we get here, we can kind of, you know, talk about it and then move to some type of action. So, I would definitely recommend to the board that we continue with kind of a subcommittee, what Ms. Camson's been doing regarding our priorities, that, so we can always keep the year-round focus, and, and, you know, definitely, Ms. Bassin, you came up some great ideas, maybe even continue to do the work with that, so that we can constantly keep that coming to the board. And I know that we've taken some intentional efforts in the agenda planning for this year to make sure that there are periods where we're reporting out quarterly that information, so that we're always keeping that in forward. So, I appreciate the work that's been done there, and I think that it's, we have a plan that we can move forward with, and so, I'm happy with it.
Ms. Smith, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I also support us defining what this high academic achievement, achieving, achievement means. Also, something, just verbiage, number four, you might want to reword it. It says, the section where it says, "Will implement it," that's future and past tense. Might want to change that a little bit.
Excuse me, could you repeat that for me?
Number four. Okay. Will fully implement it.
No, number four is page 12.
It's in your recommendation section.
Oh, it's the on-time graduation?
No, no, no.
Oh, number four there. Oh, I'm sorry.
Four.
I'm looking at...
Good catch.
The governance team will fully implement the new board accountability plan, which is...
Right, but it says implemented on there.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Yep.
Good catch.
Okay. Mr. Jordan?
So, going back to the first slide dealing with the improvement, for the, for the definitions related to VDOE, most improved, what, what the Department of Ed issued were two categories. They have the highest achievement award. This is part of their, what they were calling their exemplar awards. So, there's a Board of Education highest achievement award, and it describes what the various benchmarks are there. Then, there's a second category, and just in 2019, we didn't have any schools that were in the highest achievement award. Then, the second award is the continuous improvement award, and then those criteria or indicators are also spelled out, and that's the one that where Dr. Burksong mentioned, that we had several schools...
Would you send me a copy of that? Because you're, I could not, that's what I was looking for, for the most improved.
Number 10, right? I can provide it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and I...
I defined it.
Yeah, I just pulled it off the press release, but I think one of the things that, that's important through this, and I think we just saw that, I think we can't lose sight of the importance of the administration being actively involved in this work. So, while it's a board-level document, we, we started down the path of doing a board accountability plan, because the focus was, what is it that we could do as a board to contribute positively to positive student achievement? And so, when we talk about the various task and action items in the accountability plan, those things were indeed focused on actions that the board could take.
Right.
But you're exactly right, that that was, that's different from the action items and tasks that we would ask the administration to take.
And I was very, trying to be very careful to follow your, your... And I was very, trying to be very careful to follow your, your coaching on that.
Right, so I think we, you know, when I, when I was reading it again a couple of days ago, I, I still feel like we need to do some revisiting to make sure that we haven't lost sight of our board actions that we're taking and not have the, just the indicators and the numbers dominate the plan so much that we lose sight of what it is that we're doing. So I just wanted-
Make a request then of, of the whole board, once again, if everyone would send those suggestions to me, then I will certainly come back with, I mean, we need to vote on this part today so we can move on. But all those suggestions are important, I, I agree. But I need to know, before, before I put it all together, what it is, you know, in other words, I don't- Just send me suggestions, so I can use them. I keep asking.
Right, but just to be, just to be clear on that, so I, I think part of the, the challenge with that is I think too much responsibility is being put on you as one board member. And so I think that the, whatever process we come up with has to be inclusive and, and involve the-
Yeah, I have a point to share with that. Go ahead.
And involve the, the administration in that, that's what, that was the process that-
The team includes Dr. Bailey and Mr.-
I just, I just want to-
Okay. Let me, let me, let me interject here for a second.
I like to finish if I can.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead and finish, then I have a comment.
Anything you'd like to do. The, so I want to just highlight that again, because I think on the agenda it says that we're going to vote on this, and one of the things that caught my attention is, is that normally at a work session, this is what we do, is the works, we do the, the work, and then at the business meeting is when we would take action. You know, I have some unreadiness about taking action, having just had the discussion at the same time. But the, not that I'm against the, the efforts that we're trying to achieve, but the other thing I wanted to, two other quick things, just want to get some clarification, Ms. Campson. When you were opening up, you were describing challenges that some schools face, some neighborhoods face, and you were referencing those schools that had those challenges and academic achievement improvement in those schools that didn't and fallen on the high-performing list. I just wonder, can you expound upon that a little more, because I wasn't quite following?
I'm not sure I'm quite clear on your question.
Well, I wasn't quite clear on, when you were describing the high-performing schools, and you had mentioned that one of the things we have talked about is the impact of schools in challenging environments and-
And the way, oh, what I was trying to point out there, and if I wasn't clear, I apologize. But I was trying to say that we wanted to recognize the, the, the work and the improvement that schools that are highly challenged, high-poverty schools mostly make. And that's why it was so wonderful that the state is already doing that, and so we could just follow in theirs. And so that we would be doing the improvement, we would, as Dr. Bertsong had denounced that we had ten schools, that we would be recognizing the schools each year. You're right, we did not have any schools that made the exemplary award. But we do, but with the, but with the criteria that we were using, we do have schools in the city that are performing very highly and that we're able to recognize, even if we don't reach that very top one with the state yet this year, to start recognizing those schools that have high academic performance, even if they don't get the state award yet. We don't have a, we haven't earned a state award yet.
Not yet.
But at the, at the district level, though, we can still recognize academic excellence in many of our schools. At the same time, we're recognizing academic growth.
Right, so my, I, I just wanted to get some clarity, because I think one of the things that we should do, and I was hoping that we would do soon, and maybe we'll do that after we get the final scores, is really take some time and peel back, what are we seeing for all of our schools? Because as we just mentioned, we didn't have any that achieved the, the highest award. We have a diverse mix of student, of schools that achieved the continuous improvement award. But I also think that, that we need to provide some reemphasis on how do we take students that are meeting a certain level, a high level, however we define it, and pushing those students forward? Because even within our schools that we may designate the school as high-performing, or we may designate the school as challenged, within each of those schools, with all of our schools, are students that are across the spectrum. And I think we have to continue to give some attention on the student learning piece of this and not just get caught up on the, the school designation piece.
And, and I agree with that, which is why you saw me fight so hard during the budget process to put full-time math and reading specialists into those schools. Because, and I said at the time, is even if you're a high, you know, high scores and everything, there's, if you've got eighty percent, that means twenty percent of your students are not proficient. And that's why I was pushing so hard for additional academic support in those schools, in every single school, because we have students in every school that are struggling.
Okay.
I know, we're way over time. I'm not talking anymore.
So I'm going to, Mr. Clayton, I'm going to let you-
Well, I just had one other, if I can finish.
Okay, I'm going to go to him, and then I'm going to make my point, and then if we have some time, we'll come back to you.
Madam Chair, I think that you've, you've taken the opportunity to comment, as each of us have commented. I just have one other point I'd like to make, if you would be so kind to allow me to, to finish.
Go ahead.
The other item, as I was relooking over the plan, and we were talking about achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, whatever we may call them, I noticed that we defined the, lack of a better word, I'll have to pull it up, the control group, when we were looking at achievement gaps as white students. Yet the students, when we look at by ethnicity, that are performing the highest are those that we have designated as Asian students. So I just would like for us to come back and give some consideration as to if we're talking about achievement gaps based upon ethnicity, why we have identified white students as the mark that we're trying to close versus identifying the Asian group as the ethnicity group that we're using as the-
We, we don't make that identification, as I believe, Dr. Bailey, am I correct in saying that those are from the state and the feds? That we don't, we don't determine what they are.
What I'm, my point is, I'm saying in our accountability plan, as I was reading it, I thought I saw a statement, I can share it with you later, where it said that we identified white students as the baseline. And then we are measuring other ethnic groups against white students to determine whether or not there is a gap. And I'll, I'll pull it up for you a second.
Right, right, and I would like to have Dr. Bailey included in that discussion, because I think we, we don't determine that.
I'm not, I'm not debating the ethnicity. I'm just saying that I think one of the things we need to consider is for our plan, whether or not we want to, if we're going to do it by ethnicity, whether or not we would utilize the ethnic group that, that has shown the highest.
And that's really something to look at.
I, I do understand your point, because if we're looking at the data points and looking at how the children, the Asian children have performed, they have outperformed white students. And so if we're trying to close gaps, as, you know, Mr. Jordan said, that is something that we need to look at.
Yeah, okay.
Great suggestion.
That makes perfect sense.
Okay, that's a hundred, like, they're ninety-nine percent. Like, I think that's the goal for all students.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, Mr. Clayton.
So I, I just wanted to, to just point here that the accountability plan, from my understanding for us, is board-level, it's our accountability plan, but it's incumbent upon the administration to come up with their own plans based off the goals for which we've established as a board level, which will then also go even down into the school level, the schoolhouse plan. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to things for anybody who's watching, that, that this plan is high-level as a board, where we're supposed to be at with the goals, aligning with what the VDOE, aligning with the State Department's given us and ESA and so forth, so that we can align those particular goals. It drops down to allow the administration to talk about the tactics and the practitioners to do what they need to do and then bring back recommendations and report out to the board, to us, based on what we've established as the lofty goals, and then also even down to the schoolhouse so that we can have measurements that are across the board. I just wanted to point that out, that that's important, and that we're not, you know, we're not coming up with other different things. I do believe that you brought up some good points, Mr. Jordan, in regards to the, the Asian student piece and, you know.
Yeah, I know, I've never thought of that. That was a good point.
But we have, we've not yet agreed for the accountability plan to go down to the, to the school level.
No, we're not talking about this plan. We, I think what we identify is that we leave it up to the administration. It's not incumbent upon us, because we're not giving the administration, telling them what to do. We're giving them, this is the roadmap of where we want to go as a board. That's our role, and when we get below the waterline is where they come up with, this is how we're going to do it, and this is how the schools are going to do it. So I'm not, I'm with you on that, and I'm not saying that, you know, but I just want to make a point that this, we shouldn't really get into telling them how to do that.
And, and really, it is incumbent upon the superintendent to help us inform our decisions on the policies, the budgetary implications, all of that. So that if, if when they are doing the work and they see that there are certain policies or practices that are in place that are impeding equity, that are impeding achievement gaps closure, that's when you come to us, and for example, under student learning and achievement, you would say, Dr. Gabriel, board members, this is what we've seen. We need to have the board take a look at this, and this is why. And these are the reasons why. And so that helps us to make these informed decisions so that we can act on those items as the policymaking body. Okay, we're going to Ms. Smith, and then we're going to close it up and-
I want to say that I support what everyone is saying here about the equity piece of this and fully addressing it. What I'd like to see come from the administration is those schools that are challenging, have challenges significantly above the rest, that we be made aware of what those schools are in need of. I am certain that the principals in those schools know what resources they probably need to improve and that we see a intentional roadmap from the school to the budget. If it's fiscal resources, then we see it linked to a budget. If it's personnel resources, we see it linked to some type of hiring process. If it's instructional support, we see from one presentation to another how we're going to improve these schools. Because it can be accomplished, but we have to make an intentional effort to accomplish this. Schools, two schools come into mind for me, and it's STEM Academy and Lindenwood. If we look at the prior history of those two schools, just those two, we have to do something different. And these fourteen that are on our list of not fully accredited schools, we have to look at them because most of them for more than three-plus years, they have not had significant improvement. So while the overarching plan that we have is good for everybody, it is clear that these schools need something in addition to that, and we need to be shown what they need in addition.
Couldn't agree more.
We got it. There's an expression that says bend the curve. We have to change the trajectory that these schools are on and then present a new one for them. And that's what I would like to see in our presentations going forward, not just numbers.
Okay, so, thank you very much. Point well taken. Is there, I, I would like to go ahead and move to adopt these recommended changes to the priorities. So is there a motion on the floor to adopt the proposed revisions of the school board accountability plan, as presented by Ms. Campson, with the one modification?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the proposed recommendations to the accountability plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, okay. Any further discussion?
Yes, so I just, just so for clarity then, the, where we said that we have areas of the state's definition and indicators of achievement, and we haven't yet identified our collective understanding of what they are. This, how does this motion then, what, what are we actually adopting, I guess is what I'm trying to get some clarity on?
Well, it does include the chart that's current, the chart for high academic achievement that is on the current accountability plan.
It, it does, I'm not sure I'm following. So in, we have, we have on the current version, the June, July, whatever version was most recently adopted. We, in that current plan, we identify eight schools, whatever the number is, that were-
High performing.
High performing.
Eighty percent pass proficiency rates.
Right. On, on the presentation we just received, we acknowledged that we are trying to be inclusive of the state's work, but we've also acknowledged here that we've not yet, as a collective, provided clarity around what those indicators are, so that you are part of the continuous improved and you are part of the highest achievement. So in this motion, when we are adopting the changes, I'm just wanting to make sure I'm clear, what exactly are we adopting? What, what are the changes we are adopting?
The changes that we just talked about in the wording and we are, and, and the chart that we have for high academic performance. What I was trying to clarify is that we don't have the exemplary that the state has, that we're, that this is a lower level than that, but it still recognizes high academic performance in those schools.
Right, but then, I guess, but we already have, if I'm understanding correctly, the high-performing chart is already been approved and is in our plan today.
Yes.
So I'm asking, based upon the recommendations that are here, I, like, for example, there's a slide right there that mentions things under the governance piece. But under the piece that we had for Slide One that was dealing with-
Oh, for-
For the achievement, I'm saying, are we adopting that, or are we deferring that until we have the actual?
If we defer that, then we won't be able to recognize us.
It's the maker of the motion.
Well, that's what I'm just trying to get clarity.
My motion is, it's based on what we're seeing here, just the high level. We've already identified this as a living document. I think that there are items that have come up that we have to go back to, and then it'll take some additional time. So I'm not asking for approval on that. I'm only asking for approval on the, the change on Page Nine, Goal One, which was adding in the academic, the high performing, high academic performing schools.
As identified, though I-
No, I'm, I'm not even getting into the weeds on it. I'm only, at this particular point, when I'm asking for-
We're not going to be able to recognize those schools if we're saying we don't have a, a criteria to recognize them.
Ms. Campson?
Right.
Um, what I'm doing at this particular point is allowing us to be able to identify what we want you all to go back and to continue to work on and bring back. We don't have enough time to go through each item at this particular point in this session here. So I've accepted the academic, high academic performing schools to please. I'm also keeping as presented on the Goal One Priority Five, Page Thirteen, and as well as the recommendations regarding Priority Ten, which would be Page Twenty. Those are the only things there, and as far as just a discussion on it, and that we continue to, to work, as we said, that this document is a living document, to come back on the recommendations that have been made.
Can I just ask a question on that then? So I'm, I'm not challenging that. I guess my, as the maker of the motion, my question would be, would you consider that since we discussed this at the work session today, that we are going to provide the board and the team the definitions for the state categories that we say we want to include? Update the plan with that information, share it with the board, and come at the business meeting and approve it? I'm not sure, is there something significant between?
That's exactly what Ms. Campson is asking us to do right now. I mean, I don't have to have the chart in front of me in order to approve it. If the VDOE has recommended certain schools for the most improved schools, I don't, I have full confidence that that chart will be able to be here right now, and the chart already exists for the high performing. So I don't need to see it again in order to make the motion.
I didn't add the exemplary yet. I didn't put exemplary in it. That's what you're asking.
Yeah, because I would think that part of board distinction would be that we would include the, the, the chart, include the information.
Oh, yeah.
Show on the chart our schools that are, meet that criteria as part of our baseline, and we would adopt it at the, at the business meeting. So I'm saying the opposite, that rather than saying that we would vote on it and then include it later, I'm saying we would include it now as part of the work session discussion and then come and approve it at the, at the business meeting, which is in two weeks.
I'm, I'm comfortable with keep voting on it. So can we go ahead and call the question?
I mean, I-
I was asking the, Mr. Clayton, since he made the, the motion.
No, 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 I understand what you're saying, and either way could work. But at this particular point, I mean, I'm looking at the press release that came out from the EOE, and it's got seventy percent pass rate. It's got everything clearly outlined for us that we can come back and add that in there. I think giving direction from the board to the administration that this is where we want to go is the best, and what's, what is the intent of my motion, so that they can come back and come, come back to us with additional information. This is, we've already identified it's a living document and that we're going to have many more conversations around this, but I don't want us to continuously- and that we're going to have many more conversations around this. But I don't want us to continuously be in holding patterns around things and just kind of waiting for it. School is going to start really soon, and so I think if we can take some action today, we can also come back and take some additional action with the additional information. So, I appreciate the recommendation, but I want to move forward with this here.
Go ahead and call. Okay.
Ms. Bassin?
I'm voting no, because I want to, us to have a clear definition of what we're talking about with priority number two.
Okay, thank you. Next, Campson?
Yes.
Clanton?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Gabriel?
Yes. Thank you very much. The motion carries Dr. Birdsong, student learning and achievement.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the board, I was asked to conduct a follow-up on where the school division is with the audit of special education. And so I did meet with our Senior Director of Purchases and Supply, and she stated to me that she was not aware that a request had been made for us to move forward with a request for proposal. And so, at this time, we have a couple of options that I would like to share with you. Number one, we can consider having our partner, the Council of Great City Schools, to conduct the audit. I would recommend that. They've done audits for us in the past in the area of finance, transportation, middle schools, curriculum and instruction, and we would not have to pay a fee for that service. Certainly, we would have to reimburse them for their travel expenses, expenses, et cetera. Or we can submit an RFP if you choose not to go in that direction. It would take about fourteen weeks for that process, for us to actually develop a contract and announce an award. So at this time, I would like to ask how you would like the administration to proceed.
Open the floor for direction.
Madam Chair, if I can, before I, so Dr. Birdsong, just so I have clarity, you said the Council of Great City Schools, we could use them, and that's your recommendation, because we won't have to pay for their service and just maybe reimburse for their travel, I guess, with time here?
And as you know, they're a very credible organization, and we have membership with them, and they've done audits for us in the past.
So if we move forward with this, when could we possibly, did they give a timeline of when that?
We did ask for a timeline. They have, they have not provided that yet. They are still working to develop that for us. So we had to follow up a couple of times with them, because they're involved in some other things right now, and so we're trying to be patient. But we have reached out to them, and it sounds like they are amenable to doing the audit for us.
And so my final, and in moving into this one, I just want to make sure that I, I clearly understood what you stated. There wasn't any action on this?
To my knowledge, there was no action.
Okay. So with that, because I, I think that Ms. Campson definitely had made a request in there, and there's been multiple requests about it. So I'd like to move that we have the special education audit conducted based on the recommendation of the superintendent for the Council of Great City Schools.
Is there a second?
I second. Okay, thank you. Discussion, Ms. Campson?
Dr. Birdsong, when I made the request for the special education audit, one of the things that I emphasized was it wasn't just a financial audit, but they were also, and, and it wasn't just a compliance audit, of which, you know, we've done a number, we've had a number of compliance audits done, that it was also a delivery of instruction and implementation of I E Ps. In other words, what the program actually looks like in the classroom. Will this also, will, are they able to also do that? Because that's, because I think when we listen to so many of our parents as they come in, and certainly from my own experience in the schoolhouse, how you implement the I E P, the type of instruction that you deliver in the classroom is what we need to improve so much on. And so I wanted to just be sure. That was one of my, and the reason I wanted to be external when I first brought this up, is that I wanted to be sure that the way we're doing the programs are, are getting our children to as high an academic level as they can meet, because as we know, our largest achievement gap we have is with special needs students. So, is that something you, I mean, would that be automatically included in it? I don't want to slow a vote down.
I think we would have to be very specific in our statement of work, what we would want them to do. So I would like some clear direction from the board, since I guess this was asked of the administration months ago. So I want to be very clear on what the expectations are.
Sure, okay.
Go ahead. So whenever, in the work session where I had, I had asked for the independent audit, it was a program evaluation. It was changed to refer as audit, and I thought that was maybe something that was a term that was...
Okay, that's a good point. You know, something that the school administration refers to this as, but it is a program evaluation.
Okay. We want to, we want to improve, walk away from knowing what we're doing well, what we're not doing well, and how we can, how we can improve. And the whole point was, going back to the board accountability plan, is that we can't be held accountable for something that isn't being implemented well.
Very clear.
Well, we wouldn't reach our goals unless we knew how it's being implemented, and how to change this.
Madam Chair, I'll accept the friendly amendments that have, for clarity, and include program evaluation in my motion.
Okay.
Are there other expectations as relates to the audit?
Just a final overview of what it's going to include, what's going to be included in the audit.
And that's a question?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
Once, once you communicate with the Council of Great City Schools...
Yes.
And they're going to be able to say to what extent they can provide those services. So I think we, we should, we are due a courtesy of knowing...
Sure.
What they can and cannot do.
Right. So would you like me to share the statement of work with the board prior to asking them officially to move forward?
Sure, yes. As well as their feedback.
Yes.
Well, yeah, so you'd have to present it to them, get their feedback before we signed on to it.
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Okay, I'm just writing this down.
I second that. That was my, part of my comment, is that I would like to see what specific, specific items we want them to look at, and certainly beyond compliance, and focused on the programming.
Okay.
Yeah, for me. So, working backwards from that, if the, if the council has done special education audits for other divisions, it might be of value to just ask them if they would share a couple of the audits that they think would be, that align with what we're asking for in Norfolk. In that way, the board and administration can just simply take a look at what's, what they've done in other divisions, and see if that meets the, the goals for the board. The other item, I'm a little surprised that there would be no, nothing that anyone could share with you in terms of goals, expectations of work around the audit. The, actually, the special education audit discussion has been around, in the school boards and county plan, and has been around for two, two, yeah, at least a couple of years. So, and I know we've discussed it this year, so I would ask if...
You got it?
Pardon me?
I'm just saying, you got it, you know...
I have what?
You have a copy of it. I mean, I'm not saying any bad. I mean, normally you have a, do you have a copy of it?
Yes, we, we have a copy of it.
I don't know. Wait, 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 what are y'all talking?
A copy of what?
No, I mean, Rodney normally has lots of information, so I was just asking, do you have a copy of it, of the parameters? You said twenty seventeen.
I don't, I don't know that I do. That's what my, you know, you all cut across me, so you get me confused. So, I was just simply trying to say that Dr. Birdsong mentioned that she had contacted, I think, purchasing, and, and didn't see any evidence of it getting to purchasing. What I was saying is, I would think that some other department, somebody, somewhere would have started working on forming these things, because we have talked about, I have to go back and search. But in terms of that, that was what I was responding to, saying that that is surprising to me, and maybe we need to check with some others on, on trying to track that down, because that's been talked about.
Because, you know, I did ask, I previously presented, and she told me that, that she was down to one vendor, remember?
She said she had...
Down to two.
She had narrowed it down to two. She said she was already doing it. Whoever would have been a part of that process.
Two, two vendors?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Bassin, and then we're going to call the question.
Yeah, and I, I was just going to apologize, but what I meant was, just to clarify, it's been in our board accountability plan to do it, to have a special education program review since at least two thousand sixteen, seventeen, to get to that point. And we've had other program reviews in the queue, so it's not that it was, you know, over, over time hadn't been done. It's just we're, we're getting to the point where we can actually do it and complete it. It was where we had left off, and, and now I too felt like someone in the division should, should know if there was some progress in place on that front.
So can you just restate the motion?
Thank you.
I've got lots of notes here. So, I'd like to move that we direct the superintendent to conduct a, well, to present to the Council of Great City Schools our scope of work regarding a special education program evaluation and audit, and that you report back to the board on those findings for a final approval. Is that cool?
Okay.
Second.
Second, it's been moved and seconded?
I want to start.
No, no, I'm, I'm... It's already been moved. I'm just making a friendly amendment to it.
And just wanted, what I also thought I heard is that before that statement of work goes to the Council of Great City Schools, that we have a chance to, to look at it first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Yes.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Okay, now there's clear direction.
I'm so happy this progressed.
Next item on the agenda, human resources.
Okay. Madam Chair, it was brought to my attention that last year, we were able to provide some stipends for teachers to, who would be working at what was deemed schools that were challenged by retention. And so this afternoon, we've asked Mr. Billups to provide us with the report of the results of those efforts, and then we can draw our own conclusions. So, Mr. Billups, I think he, he stepped out?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so...
I have some comments that probably can fill up some time until he gets here.
Oh, okay. Right.
Do you think it would be beneficial to have him in the room to hear the comments, though? Would that be beneficial?
Oh, I, I don't mind going ahead and, you know, I'll answer the questions to the best of my ability.
And we've discussed this before, Dr. Birdsong.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's, as you mentioned, at the beginning of the year, last year, we were made aware that teachers were given stipends for hard-to-fill schools, and now we're getting the results of that. The other information I'd like to see throughout the year...
Yes.
That can help the board see how we're progressing, and it ties back into the whole equity bit of the schooling, the schools, is what, what are the number of authorized positions in these schools? At the beginning of the year, how many of those positions are filled? How many of those positions are vacant? And we already get the rest of the information in terms of retention or attrition. We get the rest of the attrition information. But for us to truly be able to see how we're resourcing these schools, at least with teachers, we need to be able to see that information. And so just seeing these numbers...
Sure.
Don't tell us a picture, and we need a picture painted for us to be able to make informed decisions.
And we agree with you one hundred percent. Mr. Billups and I met maybe a, a couple of weeks ago. We've met, met a couple of times about the suggestions that you had in moving forward with additional data that would help you to make informed decisions. And so, we are prepared at the next business meeting. We've been playing around with a variety of charts, probably how many, six different ways to show you the information, the pivot tables, and, you know, all other types of pie charts and graph charts, so that you can clearly see the number of allocated positions per school, the number of long-term subs at any given moment. And we, we're even going to break it out into two, two different types of long-term substitute situations. We have long-term subs due to vacancies, and we also have them because, for, for whatever reason, a staff member may be out on F M O L A, or another instance which would qualify them to be out for an extended, an extended period of time, and we can't have a, an authorized person in the position full-time. So we have been looking at the data, and we are prepared to present it to you in a variety of ways. You just need to tell us in which direction you would like to go. So we did hear you, and we're ready to provide you with that information. Thank you. So again, Mr. Billups, without further ado, Mr. Billups will share with you the results of having the stipends for our teachers at the six schools. And I think this year, we are prepared to move forward with providing stipends for the classified staff as well, I think.
Yes.
Okay, that's right. Okay, so Mr. Billups, without further ado.
Okay, good afternoon, school board members. What you have in front of you are the results of our incentive payments that were made to our, what we consider to be our hard-to-staff schools. Just a, a brief recapturing of how the, the six schools were selected. We looked at three years' worth of previous data to determine what schools had the most number of vacancies when school was opened back up at the beginning of each year, and which schools just seemed to be the hardest actually staff over, over a period of three years. And these are the six schools that surfaced, and so that's how those schools ended up being selected. So, last year, so last year, we met with them, we met with each of the schools, gave each of the, each of the teachers, gave them the, the document that they needed to sign to explain how this program was going to work. Now, the way the program worked is that this program was for any person who was on a teaching contract within that school. So that would include classroom teachers, as well as non-classroom teachers on, on a teacher's contract. So that would include individuals such as social workers, psychologists, speech pathologists. If they were on that, a teacher's contract, then they became eligible. Now, some of those individuals are itinerant, and they don't all work at a certain school every day. They may have two or three schools. So we made sure that the amount of the stipend that they received was appropriate for the amount of time that they spent at that school. So that's, that's a little bit of the history on how we got there. So what do our numbers look like at the, at the end? Overall, in the report that you're looking at, those in green that you will see, they show improvement. And then we can take a look at this and see what, well, how did it improve? So let's take a look at Chesterfield Academy first. You'll see that the turnover at the end of seventeen eighteen, there were eight teachers who turned over at Chesterfield, then representing a nineteen percent turnover percentage. And then this year, there were seven, so the turnover percentage went down, albeit small. There was a, a one-person difference. It represented a two-point-three percent improvement. And what I provided for you is information that says the average number of years of the experience of the teachers who turned over. For Chesterfield, it was three, three years average. And those reasons to the right are what you see, that the reasons that those who did leave are the reasons why they told us that they left. Three were for personal reasons, two for personal illness, one person had a licensure requirement issue, and then one other person went to Virginia Beach. So that's the information that they cited for us. And as you look at the report, and you go down the report, you'll see it's arranged the same for each of the, each of the individuals.
Okay.
Good, could I have? I understand why you were selecting these schools, because they certainly have the highest turnover rate. My question, and they're all some of our struggling schools, and, and my question is, in some of the schools that we have that are not on this list, but are, who are in our high-poverty neighborhoods, they have a culture of celebration and morale building, and, and they do a lot of extra things that maybe keep their turnover down, and, and their reward for that is they're not included in this. And, and I have, and I have a little concern about that, because, I mean, I'm, I go into some, some of the schools that you would think might be on this list, because it, it's a lot of hard work, although once again, as I always say, every single child in those schools can be proficient. But, but because of the culture and the environment that's been built in those buildings, the teachers stay, because they appreciate the amount of support they get. because they appreciate the amount of support they get. So I'm not sure how to address it.
Yeah.
But it's, I know that there's a little feeling there that, you know, the harder you work and the better your results, the less, the less you get.
Right, right. That concern has been brought to our attention. And um, Dr. Birdsong and I have discussed that. If, this was the, our first blush into trying to do something. If you recall, we knew that there were some issues with retention and all. So we were trying to figure out early on, what are some of the options that we have? So we employed this one.
This is.
Right, so this was the first thing. But in, in trying to continue and think forward about how do we, what are some o- other things that we could possibly look at and do, what you're citing is one of the things that we did recognize that, you know, is this could have the perception that it's a punishment to some of those schools who are tough, but the folks actually stay. So that is something that we have recognized that we will like to take a look at.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Smith?
So I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. Looking at the top line with Chesterfield and eighteen nineteen teacher turnover, all seven of these teachers receive incentives?
Yes, they did receive incentives to go there, yes.
So this whole list is only a list of teachers who received incentives?
That left.
That left.
They, these are the people who, at this, they were at this location, they left, they received an incentive because they were at that location. But now they're not returning for the nineteen-twenty school year.
And I thought what we were going to see is how the incentives, not just turnover, but how the incentives were working. And if it was a practice that we would continue to bring teachers into those schools. So how many total from this seven, did all seven turn over? Uh, what I'm trying to ask was the full population, seven, and then there was a hundred percent that we provided incentives that turned over. I see you shaking your head, but we don't see it in here how it works.
No, 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 all the teachers in the building got the stipend, every single teacher.
Every single teacher.
Everyone who's on a teacher's contract or a non-classroom teacher but on a teacher's contract.
Right.
But I didn't see that in the, cause that's, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
But we.
So that's the, that's the whole that you're looking for.
I thought when we, when, when we were presented the report at the beginning of last year that it had new teachers coming in who received incentives to come to the school.
Mm-mm, no, it's for every teacher in the building. Every teacher in that building is, received that. That's your, that's your base.
So for all two, four, six of these, every single teacher teaching in that school receives incentives?
That was on a teacher's contract or a non-class, or a non-classroom teacher but on a teacher's contract, yes.
And see, I didn't understand it to be that way.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I thought the incentives were given to new teachers to attract them to come and work in the school. That's what I thought was taking place.
Yes, the new teachers received it, but also the veterans who had returned. And when we would present the other reports to you that Dr. Birdsong is speaking of, then you'll be able to see clearly how many teachers are actually in each of these buildings, representing then how many actually left and the overall percentages and all.
So one of the things we see from this, though, is the incentive isn't, isn't really impacting the retention.
In large numbers this first year, that, that was one of the conclusions we drew as well.
Mm-hmm.
Although it's improvement, it's not substantial.
Ms. Basine? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, you.
So, so, so what are some of the, what, what is some of the discussion that's taking place to improve upon what we're seeing here?
Well, one thing that we're doing this year is, is, as well, is we are adding in for the teacher assistance. There was some kind of concern from others that had, you know, hey, we work with the students as well, but we're not receiving anything. So this year, we were able to include funds that the teacher assistants who work alongside the teachers will also receive um some of the incentive monies as well. As well as, we can look at our reasons as to why our folks, why, what, why they told us that they were leaving anyway and see, are there opportunities to improve upon that? You will see, for example, when you look at um Jaycocks, even though Jaycocks did not appear to have improvement, um, the difference of the three folks, four of those folks left because they retired.
And there's a couple of ways, we talked about, there's a couple of ways you can look at that. Sometimes when people have their thirty years, they may decide to stay another ten years because, you know, they feel engaged, they don't feel tired, they feel supported, and therefore they won't retire. So there are a couple of different ways you can look at retirement. I'm sorry, Mr. Billups.
That's okay, that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Ms. Basine?
Yeah, cause I had another thought, but I lost it.
Ms. Basine?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll come back.
And then Ms. Martin?
Um, so as you look at this, there are some other things that I would like, you know, us to pay attention to. I think after one year, it's hard to really come to any real conclusion. And, you know, we need to have some longevity to, to really determine the impact. But as we do that, some of the other things um that I would like us to look at is what are the characteristics? Are we losing teachers in specific content areas? Are these teachers um special ed inclusion teachers? You know, we know that um, just from our, you know, reviewing our personnel docket every month, it seems like that is, um, you know, a hard-to-staff. And that's not a Norfolk thing, that's a, a national thing. Um, you know, that those are, math, science, and special education are, are typically where you see higher turnover rates. Um, are we seeing the same thing? How do these turnover rates compare to our district as a whole? Are they comparable? Are they better? You know, those are some comparisons that I would like uh to see us make when we look at it other than just, you know, this is the, this is the total sample, this is how many left. And, you know, really being able to compare um what's going on there. So those are some things um I'd like us to look at. And the other, other piece is, are the teachers that are leaving, are they teachers that are certified via, you know, alternative pathway? Or are they, is there, is there a need for greater support or um attention to be given to those teachers? And those are things that I think we should uh pay attention to cause as, as you mentioned, there may be other kinds of support that may
Right.
impact whether a teacher stays in the, in the building or not, aside from monetary. So, um, I'd like.
Yep. Yeah. Ms. Martin?
All right, thank you. So um, I think that last year when I heard about this incentive pay, I thought, okay, well, this is, you know, kind of a good idea. It's definitely just um a very targeted idea. There's, you know, not very comprehensive. Um, but if you look at hu- human resources research, I mean, there's tons of research out there on job retention. And pretty much, I think it's universally known that you can't pay your way out of, out of a problem.
Right.
That, adding that piece, which I'm sorry that it hasn't been added, it's kind of, you know, but having the piece, that culture of support and appreciation, and it's a place that someone looks forward to going to work to every day, I mean, that is, that is paramount. I mean, without that, I mean, there's no amount of money that we can throw at anyone in that building, in these buildings that's gonna keep them. So I really think we need to focus a lot more on building a culture of appreciation and support and making it a fun place to work because it should be fun. These are children, they're doing, you know, I imagine teachers are doing what they want to do for their, you know, careers and, um, and yeah, I mean, it's, I, I just can't imagine being with a bunch of kids and, and thinking about my paycheck at the, I mean, you know, obviously it's necessity and, and it's, it's very valuable, but, I mean, you want people to feel appreciated for what they're doing.
Ms. Klein, Mr. Klein?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Ms. Basine had asked, and I think it's, it's also what Ms. Martin has. And, and bring it back to Mr. Billups. Was there any coaching or master teacher mentoring that was added on and coupled with the, the incentive for any of those individuals that were in there?
Not specifically as part of the incentive offering. However, our team has worked with and provided information and reports to Dr. Cataldo's teams, who are the math specialists and the reading specialists and all that, to target and identify who are the new teachers in the school, who are the substitute teachers in the school, where are they located so that his folks can then know where they are and where they should be going and who they should be focusing on. So we partnered with them on that last year.
So I pivot then to Dr. Cataldo. What, what are we doing, I guess, within these hard-to-staff schools that are here to coach and mentor and to support these teachers?
Well, uh, there is a state-run mentor program that we um have, each school does have a mentor lead in there. And then we have monthly meetings with our new teachers and our leads. Uh, we provide staff development and professional development to all of our uh new teachers as well as our long-term subs. So we do provide a level of support. Uh, as Mr. Billups said, we also uh know exactly where our schools are. I mean, we go to a school that has maybe ten new teachers, we increase our level of um support in those schools, primarily just because they have that many new, new folks there in the school.
Okay, all right. Ms. Smith?
I want to say I agree with what Ms. Martin said. Also, providing incentives to the assistants, we know that that's going to impact the budget. Um, so we need to see how, not that we're in disagreement with it, but we still need to be transparent in how it's going to impact the budget. Also, we noticed, or I noticed, there's a large dump, well, I'm not gonna use the word dump, a large exodus of employees at the end of the school year, termination of contracts, if you will. That's where the largest number occurs. Um, and I'm just assuming people finish their contract before they leave, which is kind of wise, which presents a recruitment issue where you have to fill a lot of vacancies in the few months that are left to begin the school year. So I'd like to know, not right here, but at some point, what efforts do we, can we put in place to minimize this impact? You've told us before that you can't overfill a billet, so to speak. But I think knowing where these vacancies are and making sure that we have a gliding scale of recruitment and offers can help minimize the impact that this has on us.
Yes, certainly. We, um, it is a balance because as you stated, as I've stated, we cannot over, over, over um staff our positions. But we do, as we're, as we're out recruiting, we are able to offer what we call early commitment letters. Early commitments on our part, it's letting a candidate know that we're really interested in you, we really would like to offer you a position. We can't necessarily offer you a contract on that day because at that point, when we're out and we're recruiting and we're traveling, we, the budget hasn't, for the next school year, has not been finalized or approved yet. So we have to be really careful with um, with um trying to offer a contract to someone that may or may not be able to be um fulfilled. But we do offer early commitment letters, but that's not legal or binding on our part or on the part of the, um, of the, um, the teacher candidate. But yeah, we do what we can to stay in contact with folks so that they know that we are interested in them. And then as soon as we are, um, know that we have a budget that's been finalized and then it's been approved, then that's when we can start right away with um, with um issuing our contracts. And if you recall this past year, the budget, you all approved the budget in May, I believe, as opposed, it was usually the first meeting in June. So that did help as well, that it was done a little bit sooner.
Yeah, but we're seeing that like seventy percent of those terminations occur in June.
And that's normal because a teacher's contract for all school, public school divisions ends on June thirtieth.
I get it.
And so that's when most of your folks are working towards um leaving. They want a clean break. Now, you would hope that folks would tell us, you know, in February, March, April, that they're gonna leave if that's what they know they're going to do. But frankly and honestly, many, many teachers do not do that. They may know that they're going to leave in February, March, but they are under no obligation at that time to let you know that. Some people will. If they know they're gonna relocate or they know they're, they're expecting a baby and they don't, don't expect to turn back to the classroom, then they will let you know. But many wait until the very end, the month of June, to let you know that they're not going to return.
So I'm gonna go ahead and bring this, this discussion to a closure. Dr. Birdsong, um, thank you very much for the information. I think the important thing for us to know is that already for this budget year, it has been approved to continue the stipends for these schools and to continue the stipends for the teacher assistants. So that's been already approved. We know the budget impact of that. What, what will be good for the board to come back to this time around next year is, again, looking at this information and then really, really hitting home on the comment that Ms. Martin made about what are we doing also to address culture in a building? Um, and then it will be up to us uh on what Ms. Basine said, then, you know, and I don't even think that two years would even make a difference. But if we want to continue this um as a recommendation in the budget, again, coming back to the board, what do we have control over? You know, is this going to be a recommendation that we would want to continue? Um, and so those are the direction items that we need from you, Dr. Birdsong, um, as we think about this topic. And I think that it was very good intention on our part to see, you know, what are we, what can we do in order to impact teacher retention? Because we know the most important thing that influences achievement for a child is the, the teacher um that is working with them every single day. So um, thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and.
Uh, do you have a, my, my comment?
Oh, okay, quick comment.
So I just wanna tie it, this, this work back to the school board's accountability plan. Cause I think we, we have to, uh, you know, we deal with complex issues. And I think what our tendency is, is as we receive individual reports, we then focus on the individual report. But going back to the conversation we had earlier, so I, I agree with Ms. Martin. So in our accountability plan, you know, we were talking about, we know there are many factors that impact retention and also impact student outcomes. So in our accountability plan, if we have set this one, three, five-year window of time, these things that we're looking at now is part of that window. So just one thing that we did was around this retention piece. But we also talked about, uh, you know, looking at climate reports and uh doing the, the equity audit and doing some other things. So I think it's important for us uh as a board and as a governance team that, one, we always come back and look at what the research is. The state has been doing a lot of research on this. The task force that I've been co-chairing with the SBA, we've done a lot of research on this. There's a uh teacher retention um summit that's been held with the uh Department of Education and UVA. So it's a lot of information that we can do as part of our board of distinction and research. So when we have these discussions, we continue to look at the, the puzzle of many pieces and not get caught just in the, in the piece. So, and one final comment, just as an example, so even in our discussion today, we have all talked about some of the challenges that um exist at Southside STEM Academy. We also know that Southside STEM Academy was recognized for, they received, they were one of the awardees of the continuous improvement. So I think even in our own language, in our own discussion, we talk about rewarding and acknowledging folks for their hard work. I think we also have to be careful that we are highlighting the accomplishments, as we talked about earlier, but also not shying away from the challenges that we see to continue to see that mo- momentum forward. So that's, those are my comments.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Birdsong, um, educational planning?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Billups. Madam Chair, before we start with this uh school start times discussion, um, we're gonna ask Ms. Robinson, Carol Robinson, our senior director of purchases and supply, to, to join us um at the table. Um, we have been working to make sure that we're ready to open school for our new um three-eight program at the Lake Taylor School. Um, Mrs. Robinson serves as our project manager, and she has done a phenomenal job making sure that everyone is where they need to be and on time and that materials and supplies and furniture is, you know, um, shipped to schools in a timely manner. And she's done a magnificent job. And so we've asked her just to come before you today, just to provide an update of where we are. Um, it's my understanding that this week, uh, the teachers are, are moving from Poplar Hall to Fair Lawn. The move from Fair Lawn to the Lake Taylor School has already happened. And so, um, Mrs. Robinson will give us kind of a high-level overview of all of the support and where we are today with that.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Robinson?
Good afternoon, school board.
Good afternoon.
Uh, yes, as an update to the Lake Taylor School K-eight transition, what is currently underway and is almost complete right now is the build-out of the special ed rooms, the new computer lab, conversion of a new science lab and prep area. We've also uh been moving and removing some of the older mobiles off property. The Poplar Hall's playground has been brought over and is, is installed in the new Lake Taylor School area. Um, and overall, we have been executing against the plan that was approved in late April. As far as some school moves, I'd like to report that the Fair Lawn building contents was moved from, uh, from Fair Lawn over to Lake Taylor the week of July twenty-second. And Poplar Hall's has been moved this week, uh, finished about two hours ago. Everything has been successful. Everything's over at the schools, they're new schools. Teacher on-sites are at a Lake. Teacher on-sites are at Lake Taylor currently right now, and they're unpacking their boxes and setting everything up in their classrooms. We have teachers at the new Fair Lawn will be arriving August fourteenth and fifteenth to do the same. We've had a lot of staffs very excited, buildings, everybody is very excited about it. And even though it's been a tight timeline, we've got a very confident team, very involved, very energized. And I'm very confident that we'll complete this on time before school starts.
Great.
I'd like to hear more about the communication to the families. Has there been, I mean, we have, since our public meetings, I haven't really heard much about.
Yes, and so, I'm going to ask Dr. Legrand to join us at the table. I know we have been working on an FAQ to provide to the community and to the parents. And Dr. Legrand has been working with both, built the co-principals of the school to send out a parent letter about transportation and a variety of other things. So, I'll let her provide her own update.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, we are midway through finishing up, or more than midway finishing up, our FAQ. We're adding some information to our educational planning website. Mr. Coleman and some of the other folks in school leadership, along with Dr. Cataldo, they have completed letters that went to the parents around April, May, and even June. So, those are some letters that we'll be sharing on that educational planning website so that the community can see what those letters look like. But those did go to specific families, as did the principals communicate to the individual parents. Their principals recently, the co-principals of Lake Taylor just did a robo-call on, I believe it was last Thursday, and they have another one planned for the eleventh to remind parents of the transition, uniforms, those kinds of things. And in addition to that, they have two days where the sixth grade transition program will happen. So, sixth graders get used to using transitioning from class to class, and if they use lockers at different places and things like that, I don't think they'll use in lockers at Lake Taylor. But they'll have the sixth grade transition program, which is a two-day program, and then there will be a meet and greet. And the principals are working on that flyer and letter to go home. That should be done within the next week and a half or so, and then that'll also post on the website. We've changed the website, so if you go to the Poplar Hall's page, you'll see now it links you to Fair Lawn. So, nice new picture of Fair Lawn and telling everybody that this is the new school that you'll be going to. And then our video crew with TV forty-seven will be doing a little piece with the principals of Lake Taylor, the co-principals, to just get people really excited about what's going to happen. So, yes.
Lots going on.
Yes. Ms. Basine, then Ms. Campson.
Is there, is there any sort of transition program available for the third through fifth graders?
I'll defer to Dr. Cataldo and the executive directors if there's a, I don't think there's a transition program.
Can you explain?
Well, I know, I, I believe some of our, some of our other schools that, that are either K-8 or three-eight have, you know, at the different entry points, you know, have a transition for that, for both.
Like an orientation?
Like an orientation, like the same, similar to the sixth grade transition.
Right, anytime, it's really when students come to the new schools.
Yeah.
We have orientations, parents' nights, and really have the opportunity for students and parents to come out and see the school, see what the school looks like, yes.
And we'll also, we just recently, Ms. Tanner, of course, she's doing double duty in communications as well. But she just recently was able to facilitate us getting the civic league list, so we're working on that, as well as the PTA list. And I met today with Cooperative Strategies to talk about some of the ideas that I have to make sure communication is effective and we're making sure we get that information out to the community. So, one thought is that we would have a sign-up list for people that are in the community. We can do robo-calls, and we've done those kinds of things, but those are people that are in the district. But for people that are out in the community that just want that information, they can sign up to be added to the list so that they can be communicated with when we send out various things of that nature. So, Cooperative Strategies and myself will be working on a communications plan and getting that nailed down in the next several weeks.
Great.
And I just have a quick update on the previous question Ms. Basine had. So, August twenty-ninth?
That's the date.
Yeah, that'll be the date. It's from three to seven PM, and it's going to be for all three through seventh graders or new students that have not been at that school before, so.
Yeah, it was just a quick question from Ms. Robinson. What about painting? I thought painting inside and outside of that building was going to be done? A lot of that is being done at, actually, both of the schools. Oh, okay, Fair Lawn as well as Lake Taylor. Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Mine's along the same lines. When I went to Poplar Hall's last fall, I noticed that particularly in the media center, the tables were adult-sized and the chairs were children's size, and it was really a mess. So, I guess my question to you is, is everything right-sized now for the children that it's serving? I hope that those didn't transition over.
Well, the plan was that Poplar Hall's moved all of their furniture. And I am actually meeting with Principal Lightfoot on Monday to go through classroom by classroom. Do they have the age-appropriate sized chairs and desks? Is everything in line? And if it's not, for me, that's my responsibility is to take away to make sure that it gets in there.
Okay.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Great job. I, I just have to say that, Ms. Robinson, you and your department do stellar work. I know that the transition that you did with Camp Allen over the Christmas break was quite an undertaking. And I don't think that many folks know that while some people are out on vacation, you all are working very hard to make things great so that when the kids walk through the door on the first day, everything is perfect. And I just want to say thank you to you and your team, Dr. Birdsong and everyone, for highlighting how much you do behind the scenes. That really doesn't get recognized. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. All right, Dr. Birdsong, next.
Okay, I'm going to ask David Sturts and Matt Sax to come to the podium. So, we were recently informed that Tracy Richter is no longer with Cooperative Strategies. And so, we have two consultants that will be helping to facilitate our work around school start times. Many of you may know Matt. Matt has worked very closely with Tracy on a variety of initiatives for the school division, and so, many of you may already know him. So, I'm introducing today David Sturts. David is a partner with Cooperative Strategies, and he's been with the company for seven years. And they have had the opportunity to come in and quickly meet with a lot of the building, not building, central office leaders and departments around the work that we are moving forward. So, without further ado, Matt and David, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board. Dr. Birdsong, it's a pleasure to be here. Tracy mentored me in the business. I've known him personally for over ten years. We were personal friends, and I came from running a tutoring company for eight years, working one-on-one with students. That was my company's focus that I ran, working with twenty-four districts across Ohio and Florida. And then got to talk with him. He offered me a job. He mentored me in the, in the position. And I wish him all the best as he looks as his swan song and his next chapter here. So, just know that you will receive the same level of commitment that you're used to with Tracy. This is our business. We don't play around. This is, we think that we, this opportunity, this kind of planning work can make a very positive and material impact on student, student achievement, students' lives holistically. Free and a behind-the-scenes role, that's why we do it, and you will see nothing different in the dedication level that you've seen this date. So, I pledge that to you. And I look forward to looking, working with you. We have got up to speed, working with Matt and, and your leadership, Dr. Bailey and Dennis and others. So, we are ready to roll. And so, I'm going to go through a little PowerPoint here. I will speak for no more than ten minutes on this presentation, focusing the majority of the time on the final slide, which is the pivot point of where we are right now with options for the start time change with the timeline. Well, we believe firmly after discussions with the leadership that we are thirty days out from a firm recommendation to bring to you in a September meeting. So, we are, we're near the, into this finish line here, and should lay out very clearly where we stand. Just in brief about where we are here, Matt and I cut our teeth assessing Norfolk schools together. Actually, walking schools back in the day, twenty thirteen in capacity. I was joined just a year prior to that. And Matt's been working directly ever since, and I've been at the water cooler ever since, picking up on stuff along the way, and now firmly, firmly involved and look forward to leading this project with Matt and moving forward. So, to date, what's been done in the process through this year, meeting with task force is as late as last year. We're looking to bring them in to Communications. Team, talking to Dr. Legrand earlier today, looking to bring them back in the fall as, after decisions are made and implementation planning moving forward. Met with staff, school board members. You know, you've received several updates from, from Tracy. We've done the school capacity analysis that I cut my teeth in back in the day. We do, live in projections every year. We, we work on the master plan that involves repurposing and boundaries during the Lake Taylor move into a three-eight, Poplar Hall, so, so on, so forth. As this start time plan comes to a sunset, we're going to pick up that plan here in the next thirty days and move forward, working with your leadership to prioritize the next phases in the master plan, what will be the action items for the remainder of this school year. Bit of part of the educational specifications, that's another hat that I wear with the team, and happy to provide any further work on that. And feeder patterns, that is something that we have made some recommendations for some small changes in the past. We are going to look at that more holistically moving forward and getting directions from Dr. Birdsong and team about how we prioritize that in the master, in the long-term master plan, leading up to the start time planning, which is where we currently are. Next slide here. So, the survey results, oh, this is working. All right, survey results you've seen before, so I just wanted to do a quick flyover, two quick slides on that. We did have nearly fifteen hundred respondents, and those respondents, when I looked at them relative to elementary, middle, and high school, the parents and teachers follow proportionally to, to how many students you have, generally speaking, elementary, middle, high. So, you had a representative, representative sampling by grade level there. And what the overarching message is, yes, open the change. You took that message and you, you approved a school start change moving forward. And provide a little more detail, the proposed start times you see on the survey at the time, you see listed to the right at the current. And I aggregated up the parent and teacher satisfaction levels by grade level there, and you see on a net about two-thirds satisfied at the elementary and middle level with the least satisfaction at the high school level and by a factor of two, the most dissatisfaction. And that's really where we've taken direction and to begin the, to continue this conversation with your leadership. This is, this next slide here is just a, where is it? There we go. Just more breaking down those agreement levels by, by elementary teacher, elementary teacher, middle teacher, high school. I aggregated up in the slide previous the parent and teacher scores, but wanted you to see those more discreetly again in, in this document. So, flying over because you've seen this all before, don't waste your time. But I did want to do a flyover, make sure we were up, got back to where we started. So, start times. We propose that we will work with your depart, with the leadership here to have a proposal, recommended proposal this month to bring to you next month. We, meeting with the ELT and with the different departments, we, we did meet today with Communications. We met yesterday with Transportation. We met yesterday and today with Athletics. And we are scheduling next meeting with Wraparound Services to talk about the implications for the change, particularly as it pertains to elementary level. When it comes to key drivers of the start times, as you are aware, transportation and transportation efficiencies is a driver. Health and wellness of students is a big driver, as, primary driver, as identified there in the survey and the research presented to you previous. And some of the implications of those on the athletic side of the fence have to do with lighting, and I'll discuss those in a minute, and the different options to, to maintain your current level of programming while still making the start time. There's a couple of ways to, to achieve that end. And then Wraparound Services for all students, but particularly the elementary school, which would have now the earliest dismissal time in the proposed stagger. So, without laboring any more points, I'm going to go to the new information. Now, this is a little bit harder to read on the big screen. That's why we have it printed off in front of you. But here's, here's the different options. Option A, this is your proposed start time that you brought out to the community in the survey. This is high, high school starting last, middle school second, elementary first. So, elementary, middle, and high. That was the proposition. Now, the original concept for that, that would be, you would require lighting at your high school field so that you can maintain your full programming for the six weeks in the fall, six weeks in spring, when, winter, spring, when the sun's setting earlier than your practice is complete. So, we got twelve weeks out of the year to deal with, to varying degrees. The original estimate there was for three million dollars to address five high schools, all five high schools at your, at your twelve different fields there, softball, baseball. Now, we, in talking with the different departments, talking specifically with athletics, realized that there is a Plan B to achieve that same end. And that is that if three million dollars is, is unreachable in the next twelve months, which, let's just say, that's a challenge, I would, I would get some nods on that. So, another way to achieve that same end, just keep your level of programming, is to make investments at five of your fields. And those would be a proposal at Booker T., at Granby, and at, where were we?
Norview.
In Norview, that's correct. To make some investments at the softball and baseball fields there. And while doing that, put the extra dollars in to make Booker T.'s field, baseball field regulation size, putting up the fence and that kind of thing. Because while you're at it, just put in the extra forty, fifty K and, and make it happen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, that's the plan, that Booker T. field, making that regulations in both Plan A, A1, and A2. So, that's, that's a sort of a given plan to accommodate with the lighting. So, if we don't have the, the full three million in capital to invest in making all twelve fields lit, we could look at a plan for about nine forty, nine fifty K, give or take, that would allow for you to make the switch to high school being the third stagger and maintain all of your after-school sports and activities. Those, those teams that would need to practice or have, rather have games after hours that don't have lights on their field would have to travel to another NPS school that would have them. But you would be able to accommodate, accommodate your, your after-school programming that way with the lighting. The, the athletic impact there, we talked about, the lighting does allow for additional service, additional programming to occur throughout the year and for the city to use after the fact. So, there could be, there's an opportunity for some joint use, some, some sharing of resources, sharing of responsibilities, sharing of assets. Transportation impact, there's a lot of numbers in here. And I can't read them from the screen, so I'm going to do my best to do them from memory. So, what we got is, we have, looking at the different kind of numbers of runs that you do in the morning and the runs that you do in the evening. What you see is significant reduction in the number of runs that have to, that could occur, that would occur with high school as the third stagger. And that is because elementary schools, as you know, being closer to home, by and large, these are shorter runs. In the morning, you're not dealing with base traffic because you're doing neighborhood to neighborhood. You're not getting on the larger highways. The, with, with the elementary now running first in this session, those runs can be much more efficient. You are actually able to fully staff all of your positions. Currently, you have about two hundred and thirty openings. You have a hundred and seventy-five staff currently in bus drivers. And with this movement to the third stagger, you would be able to staff all of your needs at that one-seventy-five arc where you stand today and be more efficient in doing it. Currently, Transportation informs me in meeting with them that you have several bus drivers, bus drivers that only can run one stagger, and then they're sitting. So, they're not getting their full six in in a day because simply their route, because it's largely the district-wide programs and others, the high schools that are taking them here, hither and yon, they cannot come back and fulfill the full hours of contract so that you're paying for, for dead time there. In this switch, when you go to high school as the third stagger, you reduce from, from four to three, and every bus driver can run three staggers. So, you greatly improve your capacity for efficiency there, which logic would dictate you could have some savings down the road. Difficult to quantify, but it seems quite, quite possible. Would also have an opportunity for fleet reduction as, as building, as, rather than buildings, as buses get older, you have capital investment needs that are needed in those. You actually need less buses when you're operating this, this many, less runs in the AM and the PM. Okay, so that's a high level. Other considerations there is that consensus option is that really that one of these options A is consensus among leadership. A is consensus among leadership, and gleaning from the survey results would be the preferred option to go this way with elementary first, middle second, high school third. One of the wraparound services for elementary school would be a large other consideration that needs to be fleshed out and what that looks like, and that's part of our continued meetings. It doesn't seem insurmountable, it's something to address. In that second, A2 option, which is not making all of the field investments right now, but making just under that million mark, you get all of the same benefits on the transportation, you get most of the benefits on athletics, except for the others, you know, the handful of other schools we need to sort of work at over time, with the master plan being that you make that initial investment possible in, before fall of 2020, and plan for the remainder investment, about $2 million to complete the rest of the sites over the next five years, phasing those in. Now, options B. B1, B2. If that 940, 950 mark is unattainable in the next 12 months, it takes about six weeks or so per site to put up those lights, so it'd be something to move on in the coming months, if you will. If that is unattainable, you could make high school the second stagger. This would be less than, this really was considered more of the concession option, it could work, preferred option would be high school third. High school could be later and complete its athletics by the time sun goes down, and so you wouldn't need the lights necessarily. So, option B1 is that you make high school the second stagger, middle school would be the third stagger, and that you work towards those investments of putting in the lights, and once the minimum number of lights are invested, that 940, once that's in place over the coming year or two, or whatever it takes, you then switch to the third stagger, you switch the stagger. So, the challenge there is that you're making two transitions over time. The benefit is it's a lower initial capital investment, because if you can't scramble to get it right now, the challenge is you've got to do it twice. That's moving a lot of cheese.
That's a lot.
Suboptimal. The, you would get some similar impacts, similar transportation efficiencies, though not as great. One of the challenges that would also occur is that from a middle school perspective, your middle schoolers could be coming home after six. And that's, they would have a longer, a later, later day, not longer, but later day, and that could be a challenge. Another variation of that theme is you just decided, there's no way we're getting the lights in, in any kind of foreseeable future, we're not going to come up with that money, we're not going to get our hands on it, so we're just going to make high school the second stagger and leave it be. Okay? So, as you can see, that the preferential order kind of goes A1, A2, B1, B2, as discussed with, with leadership, as informed by the survey. So, what we plan to do, and I'll, and I'll wrap up for questions here in just 30 seconds, what we plan to do is flesh out the wraparound services impact here in the plan to accommodate these different scenarios, work with leadership on, on which of these options, confirming the most preferred and the most, and what was reasonable, and coming back to you with a recommended path of one of these options in your September board meeting. And with that, I'll take questions or further comments.
Okay. Questions? Okay. Ms. Bassin, Ms. Campson, Mr. Clayton, Ms. Smith.
Well, first, a comment, I think, front and center when we talk about later start times, the health impact.
Yes, ma'am.
Should be front and center. Although I know the financial piece is what we're, we're focusing on in this slide here. So, to that end, I have a question about, at one point when we began discussions on this, we talked about, Mr. Richter had made a recommendation of the possibility of renting lighting.
Yes, ma'am.
For, as we talk about, you know, progressing or through implementing or providing lights at all of our schools, we talked about rental, so I would like to know where that falls in these plan options.
Sure.
And then, for option B, I'm assuming that when you say that the differences in the staggers, you talk about the same times that are recommended in option A that we've talked about, but it would just be that middle school would be in the last.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to be sure I understood that. So, I'd like to hear more about the.
The rental.
Lighting, yeah.
Okay. So, in discussions with Steve and looking at it, the, the realization that you need the lights for about 12 weeks a year makes that an impractical option. If you needed it, the renting of lights is typically for events. What you've got to do is you've got to big, got to big and a big, bring in a big 18-wheeler, you've got to prop this thing up, and then you've got to leave it. So, you're, you are now going to be paying rent on the logistics on that rig and as well as the lights, which is fine for one, two, three weeks worth of event, but 12 weeks staggered over multiple sites for, you know, six weeks at a time. Just the money that you're going to be spending on that, that you're going to lose is, is too much relative to the, to your need. And when we looked at sort of the cost to operate these things, we got a quote, you know, of $5.58 to $11.18 an hour on operating the lights fully installed, so that, the cost to operate is fairly low, it's just you're coming up with that initial capital investment.
So, and was it considered that right now we have some shared use options that we currently utilize with Powhatan Field, for instance?
Yes, that was part of the.
Was that part of the discussion?
It would be in addition to using those.
In addition to that, okay.
And with the full options that you would have, you know, the full lighted options that you would have, you could make it work for that option A1, the option A2, rather, so the minimal investment for a period of time, working towards that full investment.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Campson. Back to the lights again, too. So, what, at what point in the year, in the fall, do the lights need to start being used? Is it like October, is it like when we change times? How, when does that happen?
I believe, Steve, you could, I think it's mid.
October, the end of October.
Yes.
So, I know you said it took how many weeks to do each school?
About six.
About six.
What, with the card?
About six weeks, and there, how many schools will we, when your initial?
In that, in that's, yeah, in the full, full school, the full $3 million, that's five schools, 12 different fields.
Okay, but your option here, your suggested start option.
Yes.
Is how many fields is that?
That is three fields, three schools.
And so, that would be easily accomplished if we start moving on it soon.
From a logistics standpoint, yes.
Because we don't start these start times until 2020, so.
Correct.
End of the year. If we went all $3 million, it would, so that's six times three, that's 18 weeks.
That would be challenging.
You get 18 weeks done?
Well, it depends on whether or not they, the vendor can do multiple sites at a time or if they've staggered and when they can start, but it could be done, it could be done.
They can do two sites at a time.
Mr. Sutler Miller, want to join them, because I'm sure there'll be several questions that you're going to.
Yeah, come on down. Because I want to be, I just want to be clear in my mind about the timeline. So, if we started the light installation in September to get it done, and for the, for the $1 million price tag one, and so how, what would be the proposed, the hopeful end time for that installation to be finished? Would it be ready for the next school year?
For the 2020 school year.
Yeah, right, because that's, we don't do the start time change until 2020, so we have a year.
These, the lighting company, Musco, the national company who has put our lights up recently at Powhatan and at Norview, recommended they could do two schools at one time, so they would start the electrical work at one, School B would do the foundation work, once that got done.
Like an assembly line, just go along.
Yeah, so, but, you know, the key is getting the work started this year.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you want to meet whether option A1 or option A2, we need to figure out some way to start this year, so in order to be ready for next year.
I think that's what we were all thinking, that we would be starting this year.
Yep. That's right.
Oh, okay, so.
They're going to need direction from us on what option we want to go with.
Right, well, if we go with the $1 million option and we start it this year, we'll have time easily, but if we go with the $3 million option, that's when we need to, we need to have you out there digging the foundation for that, so we can get it started soon.
We'll leave early.
But is it doable?
That's also accommodating for weather, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
What, they don't work in, they don't do electrical things in the rain?
So, that's it, you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, first and foremost, welcome, glad to have you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to pivot to one thing that's important that we heard a lot about last year, well, this past school year, and that's with our task force. And so, I'd really send a charge and incumbent upon you all coming in to really keep them engaged and working with them.
Yes, sir.
And making sure that they're valued.
Yes, sir. Spoke about that this morning.
Appreciate it. The other item they had down there, Steve, help me understand, what are we doing right now? I was sitting here thinking, in the midst of this rain, it's fine.
They're all in time.
Yeah, they're all in time.
Notice how the thunder.
Yeah.
Right, when you were thinking.
So, what are we doing right now?
Well, currently, our events are starting at four o'clock.
Okay.
We're just talking about baseball, softball, spring events. They're starting at four o'clock, we have plenty of time to get, get them in. Our other sports, soccer, track, they're in the stadiums now, we have lights, so they're not going to be affected. Now, the surface could be affected down the road, but we're able to get everything in by our start times, our end times now. But with other districts that we're involved with that are moving to these start times similar to what we're talking about, will again create some challenges, and we're playing the Chesapeake schools currently, so we're not leaving our schools until 4:30, 5:00 o'clock to get out there for a 5:30, 6:00 o'clock game currently. So, it would just, we'll just fall into that routine if, if whatever's voted on.
So, I'm, so we have lights.
We have lights in our stadiums.
In our stadiums.
And we have a few lights at, at Lake Taylor High School baseball, Granby softball.
But we don't have lights like at Booker T.
At Booker T. or at Maury.
Exactly. So, this is a, just as much as we're looking at this, this is also an equity issue, and respect to all of our schools across the district, as we're kind of, you know, because I know someone on the outside could look at it and say, well, we've got lights, you know, there are people who are out there doing things, but not every one of our schools have that. And so, this is an opportunity for us to kind of really bring everyone up on the same playing field and to be equitable across the district, right?
That's the goal.
Smith.
So, Dr. Birdsong.
Yes, ma'am.
To what extent have we prepared for this in terms of our budget?
And that was going to be my question, because what I'm hearing Steve say right now is that we needed to start the work this school year, and I'm not aware that in terms of the budget that was approved last year, that there's funding within the budget, and I'm going to turn to Ms. Ingram, who is shaking her head no.
I'm going to get that discussion.
It wasn't.
I, I thought, I thought that we did have conversations.
We did have conversations.
And, and, and we were looking at, you know, how we could at least get things started. I don't think it was ever the full $3 million, because that's all we get as far as capital.
Right.
But I thought that there was a thought process into how we could build into the budget funds in order to get the lighting started. Needless to say, we have zero right now, is that what we have?
I think we have zero.
That's a dramatic effect.
See? You don't like it? You're going to end this board meeting or?
It'll be a long way down a dark stairway.
No, you're right, you're right, you're right.
What we had talked about earlier, you're, you know, in our capital budget, with popular halls closing, we were talking about the money we were saving for the roof of popular halls, but that was also money that was going to be earmarked for finishing Lake Taylor School.
Yes.
With the transition of your pre-K2 as well. So, you know, as far as actual money geared towards lighting, no, there has never been included in the budget at all, because the decision had not been made as to whether or not we were going to do lighting.
Well, you know, this just comes back again to timeline, preparation, thinking about what the board wants. I mean, we clearly voted to have start times done and ready to go by 2020, and so, thinking of the end in mind, budget preparation, which comes from, you know, you all inform us on what, what the needs are, what we have, it's disappointing, but this is what it is. And I have, I just have to say that Ms. Bassin is, is right as far as looking at the health impacts, what the community has been very vocal with, what the research shows, I mean, from a pediatrician, the data is the data, and I think that we need to give you clear direction, and you have to be able to come back to us to say, within what we have right now in our budget, what can we do? And if we need to have further conversation with our, I mean, I'll just say, our council counterparts for additional funding because of the need that will provide multiple benefits, health, better transportation options, and more efficiency of our fleets, all of those items, that we need to at least try to work to option A2, that's what I would like for our board to consider, option A2, at least, and if not, then I will be very welcoming on any recommendations, Dr. Birdsong, that you could provide for us with the budget items that we have. So, yeah, yeah, got it. And so, I'll end with that and then keep on with the discussion.
Back to what I was saying earlier, I wasn't quite finished.
Sorry.
So, I'm leaning more towards A2, but I also see opportunities here where you mentioned lower capital costs, lower operational costs, and I think it would be wise of us to look at, it seems like there are going to be 55 less drivers, so that goes into the capital side of it, where we have the potential for, and my numbers might be a little off, but go with the concept.
Yeah.
Where, where the potential exists for us to have resources that we didn't have at one point that could be put in schools that have challenges or somewhere else in our budget, and the same with these capital costs. It looks like, I don't know what 134 less runs translate to, but we have to see what that translates into in terms of buses and all of that, the number of buses we have to buy, and then those resources could potentially be used to pay the remainder of the balance if we go with A2. But what I'm basically getting at is we need to look forward in terms of how we would potentially use any cost savings that we get out of this changing in start times, and not only look at, for the moment right here, we need 940K, what does this whole change translate into, into for us in terms of improving the district and other areas, is what I'm getting at.
Ms. Smith.
No, I do, yeah. I just didn't know if there was a response to our question.
In speaking with Mr. Kleinbell, in terms of the staff reduction, he would like to have 230 positions, but he only has about 175.
Okay.
So, we would more just be having the necessary positions for what we need when we move to the third stagger, so you wouldn't necessarily be saving any.
Okay.
Positions, they're, they're, they're operating with fewer staff than they currently need.
You are, however, on, on the term, the longer view, you, you are on to the, we don't, cannot quantify that right now, but anticipate that you would get, through the gain efficiencies, you could potentially see some savings, how that would be used as TBD.
Because we budget for the position.
We do.
We budget for the position.
We do.
And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Ms. Bassin.
So, I, I want to, I think Mr. Clanton's question is relevant and has, it's been something that I've raised to you about understanding what we're doing now, so, you know, when we started these conversations about high schools ending later, it was like, okay, now everything is going to be pushed back, but in reality, I think everyone needs to understand that we haven't been starting practice or games immediately after school as it is. So, from my view, my understanding about when games actually start, we've been starting games at, at evening hours, so I guess I didn't see that while we should work toward having lighting in place, that it should hold us up from, from moving forward with changing the start times. Do I have that understanding correct?
Well, at, at the high school level, in the spring sports, from February when they start to daylight savings is in March, I believe, they're practicing, and they're getting, getting out at 3:50, let's just say 3:50. They're practicing, and if they're getting, getting out at three, let's just say three fifty. We're now just potentially disrupting the services that we provide, i.e. the, the athletic literacy time that we're, that we're starting this year, which is a study hall. You know, their weight training, their, their food, their nutrition time. So, if we're going to say, hey, get out to practice, get finished by six o'clock, get on the bus, we're, we're losing that, that, that important aspect that, for eligibility, to giving them that time. Where they may not take that time when they get home. So, the practice part is really important. And then our games, you know, we do start, I mean, the high schools start at four, middle schools do start at five. And we'll keep that going, because if they're, especially if they're in that middle stagger, they won't change at all. So, but the high schools, you know, obviously if they're in the stadiums for soccer and track, yeah, they can start later, because we have the lights there. But the baseball and softball will be disrupted.
Without the lighting?
Without the lighting.
Okay. Because to your point, you know, we, I know that we had been with, you know, providing dinner, providing the study hall opportunity that was a reason we, they started later, the practice and the games. So, I guess that's my point, is that we're already starting later. But the disruption, so maybe that's where we start. We start with, okay, what sports are critically impacted by this start, the start time change? And then we figure out the cost for that and then kind of build up to what our end goal is. You know, this is just a thought, because I mean, that may have been the thought with the budget.
Yes, ma'am. In fact, that is A two, because it is targeted towards those baseball and softball fields only. And so practically speaking, you have until the spring of 2021 to get those operable.
Twenty twenty-one, okay.
Spring of twenty twenty-one.
Good information.
So, you've got all of 2020.
Back to the Maury-Booker T situation, our land-bound high schools, our city schools that have not the expansion. And, and it's, and who now have no lights? Was that my, was I, am I correct in understanding that those are the two schools that are, I mean, Norview has lights already, but those are the two?
Certain fields.
The baseball softball fields.
Baseball, at both of those schools. And so, does the option B, A, A two, sorry, not A, option A two, the, the right under a million option?
Right.
Is that option going, is that there to address those softball, baseball fields at Maury and Booker T? Or is that?
No, it's just the ones listed.
Booker T, Granby, and Norview.
Because, because I'm, I'm agreeing with the equity of this, that we don't want to have, just because you're located in a city, you should be the ones that have to get on a bus and go somewhere else to practice. It's more practice fields than anything. So, is, can, did that be something that kind of stays in our mind?
I think that's what they're getting at in A two.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's what we.
That's, that's what I was saying, is that?
Yes, ma'am. That starts it, that starts you down the path to get to, to full lighting across all of your fields, addressing the most critical needs.
I'm not seeing Maury.
Correct. And that's not in the, in the start, in that, that sort of beginning phase is identified. The schools that identified and working with Steve were at, at Norview, Booker T, and Granby. That would, that would get you started in terms of, you know, where the schools are, what the fields are that need lighting, and that you would work. That, that could be next in line as you work towards that three, total three million dollar investment over the next several years.
Okay, because I guess I misunderstood, because I thought you said Norview already had them.
No, ma'am, sorry. It's Norview, Granby, and Booker T would be the initial investments at the softball and baseball fields.
All right. Maury, Maury does have lighting at their baseball.
Maury does not.
No, that would be sort of next in shoot kind of thing.
Okay.
So, Mr. Jordan is standing there, but could you indulge me for one moment, because it's just something I want to go back to our retreat there last month. Booker T came up, we were talking about tennis fields, and I think there was also something about lighting maybe at the baseball?
The baseball, the racing, the fences.
It was fencing, not lighting, okay.
To get them certified.
That's that additional, pardon me, that's the additional forty, fifty or so to raise that fence and to make it regulation, moving back.
Yeah, and actually I was going to bring that up again, that I think, well, I would ask if you all would look at any discussions that have taken place with the school system, the city, and Norfolk State University about the use of their softball, baseball, tennis, track, and other athletic facilities in collaboration with Booker T. Even if it's on an interim basis, or just as we have collaboration with Powhatan Field in North Dominion. I think we have diamonds sitting there in Norfolk State. There have been discussions about that before. And if we can see whether or not it is an option or not an option and factor it in, if it's not, so be it, then we won't talk about it again. But if it is an option, how can that factor in tomorrow with students at Booker T being able to access first rate facilities?
Great idea. We'll do. Yes, sir.
And we have.
I know you have, but I didn't know where.
Yeah, we, we've done our tennis there.
Right.
Booker T, middle schools, softball, middle schools. But it's hard to do with Norfolk State our spring sports, because they're.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
They've been a great partner, so.
That's good.
Great idea.
That's a good idea, very good idea, thinking out of the box.
Yeah.
Great idea. And that goes to any of our higher ed that we might be able to collaborate.
Yeah, we have two universities here.
So then, let's, let's, let's look at this timeline and then next steps, so that we're clear. You were proposing that you come to us in September. And Dr. Burtsong, I'm going to be leaning on you for this. Right now, September is the opening of our schools. It's a very, very busy time for, for the division. We were initially thinking that we would do a type of work session at the first week of school, which is where our board meetings typically follow. But that's very stressful for the division. And so, we were looking at backpiling and doing something the second week, but keeping, keeping it very abbreviated. Dr. Burtsong, I know that we typically don't do presentation-type items at our formal meetings, but would this be something you all would want to bring at that point in time back to us, or?
We definitely need some more time with the administration.
Okay.
After we are given some clear direction, if you're going to go full three million, or should we be looking towards option, you know, A two? But we definitely need more time to flush this out as an administrative team.
Okay. So then, well, right now, we don't have any money. So, we don't have any money. I think that, let's just do a straw poll right now with the items that we have been presented with. If everybody could just raise their hand and say if you were in support of A one. Eight two?
I just want to be, so I'm not voting, only because I just think that the administration and the team need to. I don't like where we get all these options and then somehow, we're as a board supposed to try to figure it out. I think if there is a solid recommendation that the administration, the consulting team recommends for us to consider, I think that is a better path than, than that. That's just my opinion.
Okay, but I think that it is important for us to really let them know option A or option B. Because option B is, is different with your start times for your high school students, and I think we do need to be clear on that.
Right. But, but I do think there's valuable information that the administration needs to have time to vet these options and bring it back to the board.
What would you like, Dr. Burtsong?
I would like more time, so that we can work as an administrative team to talk about all of the options and then bring you a recommendation.
Okay. So, in agenda planning, we'll talk about what you all need then, very well. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next item. So, what, what we'll try to do is we'll try to get through all of the educational planning items, and then we'll take a break and then come back to community engagement. All right. Mr. Clanton.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. If my colleagues can recall, back in May, I brought up the idea of establishing a Booker T Washington High School kind of educational advisory kind of task force. As, you know, we've seen for the last two years, there is a concerned citizens group there, there are a lot of invested stakeholders. And so, what I noticed is that we didn't get that placed in the agenda for actual full adoption in June. And so, I'm bringing it back up now to my colleagues. And, and Mr. Jordan, I apologize, we haven't had a discussion about this, but one of the recommendations that I'm, I'm having in that, because you and I both represent.
And Ms. Smith.
What, that's War Four?
Was a lot of the students reside in War Four, although they attend.
Coming across there. So, about having us to kind of be the liaisons that would kind of work with that group. I just think that there's a, there's always a lot of discussion about anything about the future of Booker T. And I think that if we make a concerted effort as the board representatives, and we establish and prop up a, an actual vehicle to be able to get individuals around the table, to be able to talk about it along with the administration. Talk about ideas, the principle that's there. I think it begins to build some cohesiveness between there and also strong will, goodwill, between those who are concerned about the school, the, the education that's taking place there, programming. But then also so that we have a unified voice that's going out. And that we begin, just kind of like Rodney, you remember when we served on the, gosh, it was right there on the tip of my tongue?
Guiding Coalition?
On the Guiding Coalition. That we begin to generate individuals who can be advocates on behalf of Norfolk Public Schools and the community to dispel myths that are out there and to allow us to be able to move forward. So, that, my whole piece on that one was that I'd like for an advisory committee to be placed on our consent agenda. And that we work with the administration on how we build that out there. And definitely to send out for my colleagues, Mr. Jordan and Ms. Smith, that we, you know, work together to work with that group.
So, in, in concept, I'm okay, I'm a little, I wasn't quite following you saying being put on the consent agenda. One of the things that I think you mentioned to this group was making sure that they engage, reengage the task force that we have as part of educational planning. And one of the concerns I have is, you know, isolating Booker T, positive or negative. So, I would ask if maybe what we should do is, you know, ask the administration, ask the educational planning group if they can look at, or maybe as a board, somehow prioritize some of the Booker T work within that planning. My, my concern is we have five high schools, and I think if we're going, if we do something like this for one, we should do it for all. And I just don't have a good sense right now with where we are as a division in the middle of searches and all kinds of things, what our capacity is to, to manage all that. But as a elected official representative, you know, I'm comfortable with us individually, you know, sitting down with community leaders and stakeholders and seeing if we can frame some things that maybe we could bring back. I'm a little worried that if we go straight to the community advisory committee piece without fleshing it out some, we might end up causing more stress than, than, than well-being. So, I'd just like to be able to ponder it a little bit more.
So, if, if, if I'm not mistaken, and just for the administration's sake here to correct me here, do we have anything specifically on Maury? Or did the Maury plan that came out with the educational plan come out of the overall educational planning committee?
So, one of the things you and I are supposed to be working with Ms. Ingram and the team with the facilities committee is taking all that Maury specs, Booker T specs, all the, all the work that's been done and kind of synthesize it and work with the administration, come back and just give the board a picture of where we are and then make some recommendations going forward. And I think we still need to figure out how to get that work, because I, I think we're just in danger of being wide in a whole lot of places and deep nowhere. And I just want to make sure we have a good feel for how we're, how we may unintentionally stress the administration and stress ourselves and stress the community unless we have some clear goals and objectives for what, what we're doing.
So, if I can, based on, I don't have it in front of me anymore, the priorities that we adopted about the community engagement and based on what you said there, you know, as elected officials or individuals that represent that area. Would the board be amenable to allow us, Ms. Smith, Mr. Jordan, myself, to work together and to, to pull those leaders and invest in individuals in the community and maybe even come up with, you know, a timeframe where, you know, some specific dates where we can begin to have conversations amongst ourselves, with those individuals in a room together that aren't one-offs, but that we can, you know, for the community engagement sake, they're not saying that it's an educational planning thing, but even just to kind of vet some of their concerns and just to be able to have open dialogue from the school board of those individuals who represent them.
If it's three, it has to be announced.
Yeah.
Well, it's going to be a public meeting anyway. You know, I, like I said, I think that I'm comfortable with that. I just want to make sure we don't get, that we are aligned with the administration, we're aligned with the building principal, and that we are bringing good, not harm. So, that's, that's, that's all.
And, you know, for full disclosure, that's exactly what I want. I don't want any harm. I want to figure out how we can do a better job and take an example. Sounds like we're getting to hell.
Keep talking, man. It's going to be a tornado soon.
My pardon, you speak, now the locusts.
So, I mean, Ms. Smith, are you, you okay with that?
Yes, yes.
All right, cool. So, I don't know if we need to really, I just for the record, I guess, that we're establishing that there, I don't know if we have to do it here, but I'd just like to, you know, bring that out and, you know.
Yeah, I mean, as a committee, I mean, the three of us can get together and talk about it. As Dr. Gabriel said, we just have to make sure if we meet, we announce it, three of us can meet in the conference room and talk through it. But I do think we need to be on the same page, and then we need to make sure that the board is comfortable with what we're doing and the administration is, and the, most importantly, the, the building principal is comfortable. So, we make sure we don't step on anything. That's, that's my only concern.
Right.
Okay.
And, and, and I do appreciate you bringing that up, because it is so important that we get correct information to the community and that community members feel comfortable bringing their questions, their concerns to us. They may feel great with bringing it to the principal, but we, we are also that liaison, we are the community representative. And so, as much as we can use this to hone in good quality communication, good quality ambassadorship, that I think in and of itself is going to be worthwhile. And then they can come to us with concerns, as they have always done, to tell us about the fields, about the teaching, about, you know, conditions and whatnot. So, I'm going to leave it to you all then to put it together. Do no harm, work for the better good, and don't step on principals' toes. All right. Next item on the agenda, the CTE, our committee update. Okay.
And I have extra copies.
So, as, as a part of our committee assignments, we have traditionally had a CTE committee. And that has been usually the chair and the vice chair. The superintendent has been on that committee, and that has been also with the mayor, vice mayor, and city manager. And then a couple of folks who have been working really hard with trying to fulfill the vision of a career and technical high school here in Norfolk. We have had a, a couple of, since the year has started, we've had a couple of meetings thus far, and Dr. Burtsong has, has been in attendance to those. And so, we wanted to just bring some items back to you all of the work, the great work that is being done right now in order to move this initiative along. Because we, we all know how much we aspire to reaching this end goal. So, that being said, I'm going to go ahead and turn the pointer over to Mr. Clanton, and he will lead us in our discussion.
Okay, great. Before you start, what do, what does that have? Yeah. See, everyone should have a copy of the slide deck, and then I gave you all a reference copy from.
And do we have for the public as well?
It's on Board Doc. No, it's not.
No, it's not.
Okay. They can have my copy, whoever needs it.
Get it posted on Board Docs too. We can get it posted on Board Docs.
Yeah, that was my request, but, okay. So, in the essence of time, we're going to go ahead, so the CT High School update that's in front of you all. All right. So, just to kind of high level, it's a comprehensive high school on grades, nine through twelve, and it's, Dr. Gabriel just kind of backing up. We've had about three meetings, and those meetings consist, and this was established before I even got on the board here, but consist with, Greater Norfolk Corporation has been major driver in this. So, the chairman of the board there, superintendent, the chair of the school board, the vice chair, the mayor, and the vice mayor are involved in that. the mayor and the vice mayor are involved in that. And so, there have been several, as you all know, through the years since about 2005, we've been talking about a CT High School. When I was actually director of the Chamber of Commerce, we were beginning to have those, here in Norfolk, we're beginning to have those conversations. And so, this has been something that is not new. And it looks like we get close to there and then there's challenges and, but the biggest thing has been funding. But we're looking at a comprehensive high school, grades nine through 12. The concept of the CTE High School based off of Worcester Polytech was about being able to have students in one location where they would collaborate. So, based off of their career pathways, so if they were gonna be, and they decided they want to do criminal justice, that they would have those core contents around criminal justice, but then would also have the opportunity for those teachers to collaborate with their English, math, science, and history and to create lesson plans that are conducive to engaging the students and keeping them. So, I'll give you an example. So, criminal justice, you know, you have a lot of kids here in high school and they're like, why am I taking geometry? I'm never gonna, I, I might be a musician or whatever else, why am I taking geometry? But when you take it and you place it in a way that you say that you're gonna do criminal justice and you say, well, you might have to map out a crime scene. And then you're able to use the math to make sense. And so, being able to connect students where they are and really not just using it as a tagline and a phrase of talking about career and, career and college ready and really being able to build a pathway for them to connect. So, Citywide Choice is a program which is application-based. And so, what we're looking at is about 1,600 students, 1,200 of those seats being MPS students and the other 400 being other districts.
Just for clarity, are you sharing what the committee is recommending?
I'm sharing with you what the committee's had discussions and recommended, yes.
Discussions.
In discussions.
So, this is a, because we, we've discussed this before. So, are you saying now that in the recent conversation that you have, that the committee is coming back again and suggesting that we have 1,600 student, citywide choice, application-based school?
Exactly.
So, and, and is this then a, the, in, in conjunction with this then, is the conversation again trying to take a high school offline or trying to add a six-high school?
No, no, no. If you, let me finish it. I'm just making a note on that one. But I will, you'll get to where I'm getting at the end. So, yes, this is coming out of the committee, out of discussions. And as I stated before, we've had several challenges and iterations. And so, this is what's coming now to the board and bringing you an update. This is what, what an update. So, 1,600 is what we're looking at for students, 1,200 being MPS and 400 coming from other districts. And so, when you look at the, where this clicker is, is it there?
Here, I'll do it.
Okay. We are now, we, Mr. Jordan, as you can recall, we've gone from just singular being in Norfolk High, Norfolk High School to being a regional program, being a governor STEM program. Now, we're back to being a regional CTE, where they had tried at one point with the, but being a regional CTE school. This is something that was reported in the Virginia Pilot, that the governor has had discussions and there have been discussions with him in support of a regional concept. So, being as far as the eastern shore, the peninsula and so forth to be able to open this up and have students. Align with video ease, career pathways, elementary being able to introduce them, middle school career exploration, and of course, high school being the actual program. Karen, all right. So, this is actually taken from, it hasn't changed, was taken from a document that you all have, the supplemental from 2015 about the CTE High School. So, the CTE High School will be a public charter school initiated by the Norfolk School Board pursuant to section two, 22.1 dash 2212 dot five, subsequent, whose mission is to educate students both technically and academically for success of the global economy for the 21st century. The CTE High School will be operated by an outside 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation, the CTE nonprofit entity, established for the purposes of operating a public charter school. As you all know, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we can only have public charters. And so, you can't have just a separate charter and it requires a vote of approval from the school board. So, looking also at the structure, Ms. Tanner. School structure will be a public-private charter, calling it an innovation school. It'll be operated under a 501(c)(3) entity. Its governance would have a seven to 11-member board accountable to the MPS board and of course, based on our guidelines that we have within the district. But they operate it. They choose the staff, they choose their structure. There, on that board though, however, there would be ex-official members, the Norfolk Public School Superintendent, the city manager, Norfolk Public School Board Chair, and the Norfolk City Mayor. Again, the board has to provide authorization for that to actually happen. And then based off of that, their annual, every year, they have to submit their, their report that not only comes to the school board, but also goes to the state as far as their, their academic achievement and so forth there. Looking at the next slide. So, one of the things is there's 24-hour facility. When they're looking at building this program and the school building is that there would be daytime dedicated space for students as well as adult learning areas for, for adults. In the evening, there would be a dedicated adult learning space as well that would be utilized. Ms. Tanner. So, proposed funding commitments. This is always honestly seemed like the, the major challenge is being able to look at a CTE High School, looking at Maury High School, looking at Booker T., looking at all the capital improvement things that we have in the district. So, right now, we're looking at 110 million for a building, 10 million for equipment, about now being 120 million for the entire project. And I think maybe about five years ago, that was probably in the eighties. And so, every year it's going up. And as we're also now in a major trade war, you start thinking about stealing other things from overseas. So, there's 60 million committed, being committed for the state. This is what we're requesting.
Requesting.
Requesting. That's, it hasn't been committed itself, what we are putting a request in. And that's one of the actions that I'll talk about, which is gonna be important for that. 30 million from industry and philanthropic, 60 million from the city of Norfolk, and then of course, land donation from the city of Norfolk for the, the program. So, this is what's come out of the, the committee and what we've sat around the table. And the next item, Ms. Tanner. So, next steps based on that was to update the feasibility study for a career and technical high school. We had originally one that was sent to us and RRMM Architects is the one who prepared that. So, the city of Norfolk is taking on that so it's not an additional cost to the district. So, they are sending it out to get that updated so that that can come back to the board. The other step that needs to happen from the board is an approval from the school board by a resolution adopting the CTE High School plan. And that, looking at being able to do that at the September 18th meeting so that we can be able to get that to the governor's office and to other individual stakeholders that we're looking for so that that can get in a timely manner before we get into that process. So, those are the two next steps. Of course, there's much more in depth, but we wanted to provide some report out as to, you know, the discussions that are taking place. Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Camson?
First of all, thank you. I'm so excited to hear this. It's been a long time coming and it's certainly time now for our board, the current board, to get into the discussion about this. And it's such a wonderful opportunity for our children. I like the way it's planned out and the partnership with the city in making it happen. You know, a CTE High School, let, let me back up a second. As a school board, one of our, probably our primary goal is to, and obligation is to ensure that every child who walks out of a Norfolk High School with a diploma in their hand is prepared to either go to college and/or be job-ready and able to go out and get a job then, a good-paying job that you can live on. That's what schools are for, to prepare our students for a fulfilling life, whether it's, whether they choose an academic track through college or right into the job market. And especially with so many of our kids that, and there's so many jobs out there. We just not getting our kids ready for them. And I think that that's really important. You know, we've been talking about this in the city for so long. I didn't realize it was '05. It's even longer than I thought. If you had a child in kindergarten, when this started, this conversation started, that child would now be, and we'd moved on it, and we'd moved on it when the conversation started all those years ago, beyond the money savings, you would have kindergarten children at that time who would, could be graduating at this time from a Norfolk Public Schools CTE comprehensive high school. I mean, you know, I really think that it's, it's time to move from talk, 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 what, 14 years, to action. So, I certainly would support this board encouraging, tasking our chair to develop a resolution that we could look at, at the September, whatever the date you said, so that we could let the city know that, yes, Norfolk Public Schools is on board. Yes, we don't want to be left behind while this moves forward, that we're ready to hop on the Mayor Alexander CTE bus and get our school, get our school set up and built and ready for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Well, speaking of buses, of course, we need to make sure that we have all the right people in the right seats. And the last time we talked about this at the, at our workshop, it was, it seemed there was a lot of hesitation from the other players to partner on this. So, I just want to make sure, I guess, ask of you, I mean, we do have commitment from the city and from the private sector. And then, you know, I agree, I think a resolution is in place. I think it is time we act on this and quit talking about it. And it, you know, it's, it really, if everyone's together on this, this is probably the best momentum we can ask for, especially given the fact that it has been kicked down the road for so long. So, I agree.
Ms. Smith?
While, while I am in total support of CTE High School and the city of Norfolk, I am not in favor of this structure. I am not in favor of taking money from our schools to create something such as this. We have not talked about how this money would come to us from the city in terms of, we currently have a cost-sharing or a percentage already determine how much they're going to give us. Is this in addition to that?
In addition.
Or, okay, we have schools, Maury for example, that is in dire need of renovation and improvements. But we're gonna bring on a brand-new school. We have schools in terms of enrollment. We have high schools that barely have this 1,600 in it. So, what's gonna happen there? There's so much more that needs to be discussed before we agree to something like this.
Let me, I will, I will say, Ms. Smith, that when we have these conversations, and Dr. Birdsong can attest to this, it is never a conversation in isolation about a CTE school. It is always spoken with in conjunction to the needs of, of our facilities in general. The Maury High Schools, the Booker T. Washington.
But this is all we see right here, Dr. Gabriel.
What I'm, what I'm saying is that we don't leave those buildings out of the conversation. I'm, we're just bringing you the update as to what we have come together with so that you all are informed. Ms. Smith, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Bassin?
Yeah, I, I too absolutely don't support the structure. I do not believe that it has to be a charter school to, to get this done. I am in support of career and technical education. I think it's incredibly important. At this point, you know, I'm digesting, hearing a lot of this for the first time. And yes, we've been talking about it long before all of us were even on the school board, but we've made decisions along the way. There's been a lot of work that has been done by Ms. Goshen and the administration up until this point. I would like to know, you know, we talked about its location being at Booker T. and it being planned out with that school in mind. There are so many unanswered questions that stem from, you know, Dr., even Dr. Boone's most recent presentation to council in December, which I have up in front of me as well, with all the work the administration had been doing up until that point. So, there are a lot of gaps here and I would like to know how these conversations even from April and May, when we sat in meetings where it didn't sound that you were very optimistic about this going anywhere, saying that we don't have the money for this. And all of a sudden, we have now a, a skim, I mean, with very few words on here and we're supposed to make a decision, I mean, which to me is not, you know.
No, there's no decision being asked right here. The, this is an update.
So, now we're back at a regional CTE school when that is not what the board had talked about. We had gotten away from that with our last, unfortunately, our last joint meeting with council where we talked about the regional piece was what was holding us back. And, and so, we had focused our attention and effort around a Norfolk-based CTE High School. And now, we're back to that. And I want, I want all of those gaps filled in. And so, so anything, I believe you owe the full board that information.
And so, this update right now is a direct result of the governor's statement on the possibility of funding, state funding. If this is a regional program that is very attuned to workforce development, this could be a prototype for the rest of the state, being that we have city cooperation, state cooperation, philanthropic. The state is, is, would be putting in kickstart funds so that way we could be building on it. And that has been the change in the past two months. We felt that it's very important to bring to your attention so that we don't have that gap in time. And so, this is, this is the first opportunity that we could bring it to you right away so that you all could stay informed and be aware of this. Now, the budget process is really what is giving us our, our, our overall timeline. If we can get these funds, the possibility of a career and technical high school right here in Norfolk, regional, is highly probable. We can act on it.
Such a great opportunity.
So, when was your last committee meeting?
Let me pull my calendar out.
The last three.
No, I'm not even, I have the floor. I don't do that to you all. If y'all just allow me to ask my questions, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, we last met. July 29th.
And, so, I, I'm, we've, in my view, we've gone down this path before. I mean, we've had state officials, you know, make comments. I remember reading the, the governor's statement in the paper. I'd like to get more of a greater understanding. Are we talking about, because in the past, I know we've talked about possibly trying to tap, go, go Virginia. So, I'd like to have more specifics about the state approach. I'd like to get an update on who the members are of the committee now. And there was a briefing book that was being prepared. Because a lot of this stuff's been happening in the, in the newspaper, you know, a couple of weeks ago. The former city manager was about to bring some presentation to the city council dealing with this. I just, and by the way, we haven't had a joint meeting with council all in a while. So, I, I just think that one I'd like to hear from the Greater Norfolk Corporation representatives directly. They've done that in the past, come and spoken to us and talked about these things and we have acted. I am concerned about the, the 1,200 students and the, the regional piece of it. Not that I'm opposed to that, but part of the challenge that has been, that we've dealt with before is with the students coming from other divisions, there's been this vision expressed by non-educators or non-public school educators that, that somehow magically the average daily membership just follows. And so, we've had extensive conversations around, it just doesn't work that way. And in the past, we've even reached out to surrounding divisions that said that they weren't willing to participate. So, if something has changed in that regard, I like that, I like to know that. And I, you know, I'm not opposed to the, the Norfolk Public Schools-sponsored charter model. We've talked about that before. charter model. We've talked about that before, the board had given some consent to that before, so that, that doesn't bother me. But I am concerned about just getting this presentation at this time without our standard, trying to give folks, you know, five days, three days, seven days' time, and then being asked to take action at a, at a September meeting. So it's many more questions that I have. Most of the slides are, I mean, it's the same stuff, but I do think getting more details on this sixty-million-dollar commitment from the state is important. And then there were briefing books that were prepared. As the school board, school administration and the city council were working together, they were working on a business plan and all of that stuff. So I think we need to get a, a true updated briefing and, like, hear more from Dr. Burtsong and Ms. Goshen at the next, not now, because I think it's too much to be thrown on the plate now, but at a, at some meeting soon, so we can make sure that we are getting it from the administration and their recommendations and thoughts and not just, just from us.
I appreciate, because everything that you all have brought up, and they can attest, I bring up in the meetings. Not doing things in isolation, not either/or, that this needs to be and at the same time, when we're looking at Maury High School, we're looking at Booker T., and all of the needs that we have there. And the city pretty much told us that, yes, we can get additional funds. I think that it's important, and I, and I implore my colleagues that we are bringing this to you now, not as a dog and pony show. There have been a lot of reservations in the past, because we've had this thing come up before. It looks like we're going to make it. It looks like we're going to make a decision and go in a different direction. But it was incumbent, and the discussion was, and even with Greater Norfolk Corporation and the mayor and others, that we begin to have these conversations and that we begin to report back out. We're not adding a whole lot of extra things on this here, because it's very fluid and things are still, that need to go, need to become, the need to go back to the committee. So you were given this kind of high level here of main things of where the direction and takeaways, that we're looking at a regional structure now, that there is a commitment that's coming in potentially from the state and commitment coming from the city for dollars, that this is not about, we're looking at, that we have to redo the feasibility study. When we look at this and where does, you know, what does a school look like, where is it located, when we're talking about regional and all those.
Every time you talk, man, I tell you, you're going to break a tornado.
It's my new, it's my new school phone.
I don't know, Ms. Jordan, are you creating docs for me?
Blood one.
But no, but I'm saying is that we're, we're not asking the board to make any decision.
It overrides my, hey, calm down.
Oh, yeah, is it?
But Mr. Clayton, but on, on that point, what I, what I, because I spent some time on it.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted, and we just talked about educational planning. There's, there's, there's significant impact. So when we say that we are updating the feasibility study, the feasibility study was done of existing schools, right? So we did the, that was the initial feasibility study, then we had Dejean Richter come back and do some assessments, and that goes back to the facilities committee stuff that we're supposed to be getting together on. The other piece of it is the concept of the application-based school. So that needs, there's some clarity that needs to occur around that, because the moment ago, you were talking about us getting together to discuss, making sure we got accurate information out to the Booker T. community. One of the things that was out there was this discussion around what does it mean to be an application-based school. So there is a difference between a student expressing interest in attending versus there being some application and then determining that certain students get in and certain students do not. The other piece of it is, as we have looked at and worked with Dejean Richter over the last several years, is we've had numerous conversations around enrollment and school, school closures and all those things. So what has been a, a challenge for us, the collective us, has been when you're talking about taking out twelve-hundred students, and that's why I asked the question earlier. If you're saying we currently have five high schools, and we're going to create a CTE school within that five, that's one thing. If you're saying we're going to have five comprehensive high schools, and then an additional six school, which is going to be this regional school of which twelve-hundred students are going to come from MPS, that then has impact on all the things we talked about, capacity, bus routes and all those things. So that is significant impact, and I think it's just important, just having gone down this path, that we hear from administration experts, because I've been at the table, and I'm a dreamer too, but it's a big gap between the dream and then how you implement it and the impact that it has on our students. That's what I'm asking for.
And we will get that. And again, this is the committee just reporting out what's been happening and discussion. The feasibility study is going to bring all those things back. I'm not the expert on that. And so those items will come back to the board. But I, I implore you in the respect that there is a timeline, that we have to make some type of resolution and decision in speaking to the board as a collective, whatever the will of the board is, speaking to city councils, speaking to elected officials, that this board is willing to take a step and say, we support whatever plan that comes back. That's the important piece. We're not asking for, and that's, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll say this, that's why you didn't hear anything come out of my mouth about a school, because I think that's reckless when we say what high school it's going to go to. And I think that this board did a disservice when we announced that it was going to a particular high school, and it just kind of jumbled all things up there. So I'm not making any mention of that, and that's why that's not in this report, because it's based on waiting for the experts to come back to us with a report.
What, what's, what's?
So I mean, so what we're doing at this particular point is giving you an update out, which constantly people are saying keep us in the loop. Right now, we did that. We said, look, we want to let you know, we've had three meetings. This is what's coming out there, because there's an opportunity right now.
What's the state deadline?
We need to get something done by the end of October.
Mid-October, mid-October.
Yeah.
Mid-October.
This is to impact the governor's proposed budget?
Yes.
Is that what that is?
Yes. And so what, what, what I'd like to do is to have the board reconvene on the second week of September as a modified work session, okay, and give some detailed time to the CTE discussion, so that we can come back with all of these items that you have brought, good items, I think, that you want to get further information on. Let us come back to you with that information. And, and then we are going to be working on a time for a joint meeting with councils. I want to say sometime in October. It's, it's, nothing's formal, but we're looking at sometime in October.
Are you saying September eleventh?
Hmm.
Yes.
What is the Wednesday? Is that the second, is that the second Wednesday?
September eleventh.
Yeah.
So it's a special meeting?
It would be, it would be a special meeting, yes.
Wouldn't it just be a replacement meeting of the September of the first one?
Typically, historically, we have, we have deferred our work sessions to the second week in September, because that's usually the start of school. And so call it whatever you would like, but it would be, it would function as a very modified work session, short, because we understand that they are trying to open schools at that time. So it would be, we've kind of discussed this a little bit in agenda planning, CTE discussion policy, and that's it.
So, and I guess based on what I heard.
And we won't start before four.
Is that the brain, also to have the GNC there? Is that?
Well, I just, you don't have to, I just think you all need to come back, from my view, I just think a stronger set of particulars would be helpful.
Okay, noted.
And in it, and I said this earlier, just keep in mind, adding a sixth high school, where our numbers are already low, with what you guys are presenting to me, you cannot convince me now that one of our schools will more than likely go offline. And we need to, we need to give people the full picture and not just some small snippet overview of what we expect to happen. People need to understand the full details of this thing. There's, there's just no way we can handle that, no matter what anybody says at this table. Also, I see the same thing happening where we did somewhere else in the city with this five oh one C three concept and seven to eleven board members. And it would be interesting to know where we're pooling them from, how the other localities fit into that in terms of percentage-wise, if four hundred is coming from somewhere. There's so much more that needs to be done on this thing that we cannot, we, we just cannot.
And, and for, for clarity, and I want to move on there. That's why I provided.
It's taking money from our schools.
I provided, I trust, I just sat on a national panel about school choice. I understand, and I brought that up about moving, you know, students and how that would affect our budget. But I also remember, I gave you all a copy that's dated from two thousand and fifteen. We are not moving from the same thing that this board has voted on, and has been presented on, in multiple, in multiple times, has been presented back to us as far as this concept.
Yeah, but it's not something new.
I just started in two thousand eighteen, Mr. Clayton.
Since two thousand and fifteen. That's, I just want to make sure you have, the, the board has taken action since two thousand and fifteen, including when we initially gave support for the concept that we now are having discussions about. I just want to make sure that.
Anything different from the charter concept?
What I'm saying to you is that there were, we had a presentation from Greater Norfolk and others, and the board has taken additional action since then. I just want to make sure when we start talking about two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and five, that we go with our most recent stuff and work backwards. That's all.
So, so we're going to wrap the discussion up. We really do appreciate the feedback from everyone. The next steps that we have is we will bring these items back to the committee. In no way are we looking to take funds away from what we already have. I do not want that to be an item that is put out there at all. But what we are doing is we are trying to update everyone on the work that has been done thus far, to share the exciting news of the commitment that is being discussed right now from the state, from the city, from philanthropy. And we're going to take all of these great suggestions that you have, put it together, and we'll come back and discuss it on September eleventh. That's the best that we can do right now, because we know how important this is for Hampton Roads, for the jobs that are currently in dire need, for the, the, the jobs that are potential, for the aging-out folks. I mean, we know how important it is. We need to be able, Norfolk Public Schools needs to be able to fill that gap, and we can. And I know that the programs that we currently have right now are dynamic, they're great. They, we need to build upon it. So what we're going to do, Dr. Burtsong, was there anything else that you wanted to add before we leave this topic?
Well, before we leave the topic, I want to make it very clear that as I have been invited to be a part of these meetings, that I am certainly in support of a career and technical high school. I was also concerned that I wanted to make sure the full board was in the loop on what was going on, so there would be no questions later about, you know, what decisions are moving forward. I also want to have a clear understanding of what has been voted on in the past, what we have agreed upon, and what we need to do to move forward. So that's all I have to say about that at this time.
Thank you. So we're going to take a five-minute break. Let's come back at five fifteen, and then we'll get into the community engagement discussion. We're going to go ahead and get back on task. The next item that we have on our agenda tonight is community engagement. And Ms. Tanner, you have an update for us.
I do.
While Ms. Tanner's coming to the podium, one of the items that this board has shown great commitment toward is seeking more engagement from the community, trying to blend our ears to the items that are out there that are important to community members. And a very strong piece of community engagement is the function of our advisory committee, committees. And we have asked Ms. Tanner to please take this on, improve upon what we already have. We know that we have four committees right now, that they're bringing forth some very good recommendations to the board, but we know that we are always striving to do better. And so, that being said, Ms. Tanner, can you update the board on the work that you have done thus far to really make this effort fantastic?
Three weeks in, and that threw my fire. So, these are the chair. Vice Chair, Dr. Burtsong, board members and administration, and guests who are here today. I am excited today to present some ideas that we have to garner support in the community with parents for our school board advisory council. I understand we've adopted this back in nineteen seventy-four, so I think we really have come up with a robust, robust opportunity to get more community involvement and parental involvement with that. I'd like to give special thanks to our communications team, Brian Mack, Amanda, Ricky, our web team with Daniel. They created a, a logo, a website, and we have a quick video I want you all to look at real quick that we want to roll out later on. So Channel forty-seven, you can roll the tape for us. I'd appreciate it.
Norfolk Public Schools is searching for parents and community members who want to have a real impact on students' lives by joining one of our school board advisory committees. The groups cover everything from school health and career and technical education to gifted and special education. All four advisory committees meet on a regular basis and are designed to assist the school board with determining and complying with various policies. These committees also provide feedback and offer questions and concerns to the board. The committees are comprised of parents, students, school personnel, and other community members. If you live in the City of Norfolk, or if you work for the city or school system, you're eligible to be a part of any committee. Each of the four school board advisory committees cover a specific and important focus for students across the district. The Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee provides recommendations on career and technical education programs offered and assists in the development and implementation of CTE programs. A member's term lasts three years. The Gifted Education Advisory Committee reviews the educational plan for gifted students and determines how well the plan is being implemented. The term for this committee is three years. The School Health Advisory Committee assists with the development of health policy and evaluates school health, health education, school environment, and health services. Each term lasts two years. And the Special Education Advisory Committee counsels the board on the educational needs of students with disabilities and develops priorities and strategies for meeting those needs. The term is for three years. Once you've decided which committee you'd like to join, applying to become a member is easy. Simply go to the MPS website and click on the school board link, and then the school board advisory committee link in the left column. Here you will find not only the application, but also additional information about each committee. Your completed application goes directly to the advisory committee liaison, who then passes it on to the clerk of the school board. Then it moves on for approval by the school board. Recommendations to committees are approved during July and December meetings. Terms begin in July. Norfolk Public Schools thanks you for your support and your interest in improving the educational experiences of our students, and we're excited about working with you to continue to move our district forward. For more information about the school board advisory committees, visit our website at www.npsk12.com/AdvisoryCommittees.
Nice. I like the layout. So there's just a snippet and idea of what we'd like to do. I tell you, when I was tasked with this, I was like, oh, my gosh, this is what I want to do, da-da-da-da. But I'm really excited of how we can really engage the community, get them involved, and see what we're doing. And just this process alone, so this, if, if it's okay, we want to roll this out August nineteenth. The website, I had them make it live today, and I'm not sitting over there, but I would go through the prompts for you to see. But we're really trying to make the school board's page more robust, so folks can go there and really know just what's going on. So this video will be on our district news site, our social media sites, which is Facebook and Twitter. I'll also do a Blackboard Connect message to parents, alerting them that this is where they can go to find out information about the advisory committees and how to apply. And then in MPS News segment, Dr. Gabriel, she was here this week on Monday. We taped the show, and we have the other advisory committee individuals that are going to be taping some tape tomorrow, and then the other two taped on Monday. And we're going to have a full show that's going to air on August nineteenth strictly for this, for the school board advisory committees and what, how they can become involved. So I'm excited about it. I hope you, you are too. Real quickly, I'd like to spound a little bit more on the process. So that, that was real quick what we said, but the application process can be reviewed on the school board website. So all the details are there. I wish I could get somebody to go up there and do this for me, but it's fairly simple. It, it's like any parent can just go to the site and find out where they want to apply. Each link, you want up there, Kalila, for me?
Each link, you want up there, Kalila, for me? Each link under each one of them, it pops up the individual application there. So, it's very simple. It's no confusion. And then the application goes to the liaison, and then also goes to me. I always subscribe to a concept. If somebody gets hit by a bus, somebody else needs to know where this information is and how to obtain it. And then it's also based on our school district's websites. So, we'll always have access to it. It's not like I have to go try to find someone else to get the information. So, the application process, again, can be reviewed on the school board's website, and the school board will recommend, will recommend the first group for this school year on September eighteenth at the school board meeting to move our committees forward. With this process implemented, the school board will follow the process of approving applicants in July and December, because that's what you currently already do. So, it'll be twice a year. So, July will be the selection of the full membership, and December will be reserved for filling vacancies only. So, after this meeting, the, I call it C-Back, if you want to call it something else, you can. But C-Back website will go live, and applications will be available for online submissions. So, whoever's watching this programming today can actually go online and go ahead and apply starting now, the opportunities for them. So, after selection by the school board to serve on the advisory committee, the school board clerk will send a thank you letter and welcome or information packet to address expectations of your service on the advisory committee. That is very important. The welcome packet will include the school board's accountability plan, a description of your advisory committee, and a full explanation of the role and responsibilities, which includes the following. The leadership of each advisory committee shall compile monthly a list of three to five bullet points describing work being done, what's on the horizon, forthcoming vacancies or upcoming vacancies on each committee, notable points, successes, and open, honest challenges. The advisory committees will submit a bulleted list by the first of each month to the school board clerk for inclusion with agenda planning, and those days will be provided to them as well. Members will also receive the MPS administrative liaison's contact information and an information sheet requesting their contact information, and they'll be given details about our Freedom of Information Act, because that's important for them to know that those emails are secure and that they're actually using, like, say if they're using their personal email, just know if someone has a question about the business that they're entitled to or working on, their emails are FOIA-able. So, maybe even encouraging them to create a different email account in order to be a part of this advisory committee, so their personal stuff will not be deemed FOIA. And then they're going to have to sign a form stating that they understand the FOIA information, and I will make sure that I can link that information out to them, so they really know what they're getting involved with. And then as a special token of appreciation, we'll give them all MPS lapel pins. And then a special recognition at the end of the year for their service on this advisory committee. So, this is important, the term limits. According to the school board policy, the tenure of advisory committee members shall expire at the school board's discretion. Committee members have no legal rights to their appointed positions and may be removed from membership for failure to perform duties, failure to maintain requirements for appointment to the committee, and other good and just cause as determined by the school board. Membership and responsibilities will be in compliance with school board policies and regulations for the advisory committees, which they can learn all this information on the website. It's, it's under the main page. As part of the guidelines established by the school board to serve an advisory committee, once your term has expired, some committees have the option to serve for additional terms. Terms are determined per the individual advisory committees. For instance, a school health advisory committee member shall be appointed for a two-year term of service and may be reappointed for two additional terms. Prior to each school year, the proposed slate of members shall be submitted to the superintendent, of course, for approval. The Career and Tech Education Advisory Committee will include approximately twenty-one adult members without regard to race, creed, color, sex, national origin, religion, age, or disability, as evenly distributed as possible, representing business, industry, label, labor, excuse me, management, government, and education. The term of members shall be for three years. With the recommendation of the nominating committee and the approval of the superintendent, members shall have the option to serve additional terms. Officers shall serve to the end of their tenure of office. And for gifted education advisory, or GIAC, voting members are slated to serve three years per our MPS gifted local plan. With the recommendation of the nominating committee and the endorsement of a majority of voting members, members may serve additional terms in accordance with the bylaws of the advisory committee. Voting membership of the advisory committee will include up to a maximum of twenty-four persons, including twelve members representing parents of students in the gifted program. Other members can be community representatives, business leaders, educators from higher education, a secondary gifted student, and Norfolk Public Schools staff. The voting membership of the advisory committee shall reflect the ethnic and geographical composition of the school division. They have only twelve seats filled out of twenty-four right now. For now, nine of the current twelve members are due for reappointment this year. And then CAC members can serve a three-year term, and then they are eligible to serve an additional three-year term if approved by the board. After they have served two consecutive three-year terms, which is six years, they must sit out a year before reapplying for the committee. According to the advisory committee liaisons, the current advisory committee members' terms have expired, and individuals interested in serving will need to reapply. Or if in, or if any individuals fall within the consecutive term limit category, will need to wait one year and reapply for service. So, for full details about all the term limits for each one of those, again, the resource is on our school district website under the school board's page. So, that was the speedy version of this. But if you have any questions, I'm not the resident expert, but I can surely help you, and we can work through this process so we can get individuals involved on our school board advisory committees. Yes, sir.
So, great work. I really, I know that in conversation we had talked about this, and so you really captured a lot of the things that we were talking about. I see the website. One of my things with that, and we'll be able to, like, I think GIAC just gave us like their annual report and some other items. Can we see about getting them on the, the page, so it really becomes a place where individuals can come to get information that's up to date?
And then also, could you clarify around the, the training orientation for individuals? I think I heard something about it, and there's something that paper, or things that they're signing off, are we doing an orientation, or is it just kind of a welcome packet?
We're sending them a welcome packet, but the training, I believe, will come from their liaison, or we can partner together. That's still a work in progress. But I just really, truly want to make sure that they understand the commitment that they're making, and then also too, that FOIA piece, because I'm also the FOIA officer. So, I want to make sure that there is no discrepancies or issues with that. So, I will be working with the liaisons, with them, with the training.
And my last piece in there, just for clarity, we had, we did change the policies around there. So, all the final decisions on board appointments for the, for these advisory committees come to the, the board as a whole as a decision rather than the superintendent.
Right. Right. Correct. Ms. Martin, then Mr. Jordan.
The link says the CAC application, but isn't the application uniform?
But they're, yeah, they're uniform, but they're all under their own sites, to kind of keep them.
I think that's confusing.
Well, if you click on it, because I was playing with it here, so if you click on it, it automatically has it selected for you. So, you don't have to select it. That's all.
Yeah. Trying to make it easy.
So, I didn't, who was the reference, the nineteen seventy-four? I wasn't following that.
Part of the policy.
Oh, when the policy was initially adopted.
Yeah.
And you're saying you were tasked to do this? Who tasked you to do it?
Oh, Dr. Gabriel.
Okay. So, so, Dr. Gabriel, I think it's good work, but I do have some concerns about the, the tasking without consideration of the full board. I think one of the things we need to do, I, I heard the recommendation is to release this in a couple of weeks. What was it, August nineteenth?
Oh, at your discretion.
Right. So, there's, there's some, and Mr. Clayton just touched on one of them, there's some discrepancies between the information in the video and what our policy is. And I think one of the things we need to do is, remember at the June meeting, we changed some things with the advisory committee policies. And I think we need to first make sure that we've updated our policy manual, so that we actually know what the current policy says, and then make sure that we align with that. And, and get a update. I know you, Ms. Tanner, you mentioned that you've got an updated list of who's on what committee and so forth. I think we should get that. But before we go live with it, I think since we know that we govern through policies and we've made some changes to the policies, we need to make sure that we're all in, in sync with what the policy is, and that any information that then goes out is aligned with that. And then finally, Ms. Tanner just touched on something I mentioned several times before when we discussed this policies. The, the GIAC, some of, some of the advisory committees have bylaws that they've adopted. So, you were just mentioning, for example, the, the GIAC, and then there's certain positions associated with the CTE advisory committee. We've got to make sure that we are in sync on that, which right now I don't think we are yet, so that as we are sending these notices out and individuals start responding, that, that process of, as, as was described, at least the proposed process of going to the staff liaison, and then the staff liaison to you.
See, when they get it, I get it too. But that's not, it's like, we both get it, but they will be going, getting them first.
Right. But in those bylaws that we need to make sure that we're clear on, there's roles that, under the current bylaws, that allow for the existing committees to have some input. So, we just need to make sure that we're clear on that, so whatever our process is, follows that, follows along those policies and those regulations. And it was, it was one, oh, I know the other one. And then you also mentioned that we would do appointments in July and December. We changed the policy that we can do appointments at any.
It's rolling.
It's a rolling.
But I'm just saying, if we are proposing.
The big batch.
Well, I'm just saying, whatever, whatever the policy or the regulations are, if we are proposing that we do it in July and December, then we need to codify it. Otherwise, we're going to fall right back into where we were before. Right now, we have the flexibility to do it as needed. But if we put out there to the public that we're going to do it in July and December, then we need to make sure that we do it in July and December and that it, that it's aligned, and that we have a process. So, if a vacancy comes open, and we know that the current policy says you can do it at any point in time, just to make sure it's consistent.
Yeah, that's good.
You know, that, that language and consistency and making sure that we are aligned with the policy is important.
Okay. Okay. I got your notes. Any other questions?
Just a point, clarification for folks, that I think we have mentioned that a big chunk of our board advisory committee members are all over reappointment. And so, I think that though I, I completely understand a full conversation around the board, but I think we have had conversations, and a directive in there, one of the priorities was, from this board, that we wanted advisory committees, that this needed to be a major focus. And so, I'm pleased with the fact that it's coming back, and we have some movement. And most importantly, there's transparency to the community on how the process takes place, and how we can further engage, going back to our priorities now, how we can engage the community so that they're involved in the process. So, I appreciate that, and I do appreciate the, some of the comments around that. But I think, just in the midst of how we're kind of getting to where we need to be, I think this is a great step forward, and that the community should take it as an opportunity and see it as a sign from this board that we welcome you, our doors are open, and we want you to be a part of the process.
And just to be, I support the community engagement. I support the effort, and as you know, I've served on many advisory committees. What's, what, what I'm trying to stress is, as a board, we govern through policy, the administration sets regulations, and in, from experience, and as we were talking earlier about Great City School audits, if you read some of the audits that they've done on us, part of what they have recommended to us is that we make sure that we have alignment from the board all the way through. And so, in our excitement to push something out, I just think it's important that we align it with our policies and, and practices so that we don't find ourselves in, in other challenges. That's all.
I agree.
And the, that bylaw piece that you were mentioning, because I think we brought that up when we were even talking about changing the process, but I, I would agree. That's an important piece, because those bylaws can't be in conflict with the board's policy. And so, we just.
And the policy, as I understand it, and I, I could be wrong, but the policy is what trumps everything, the board policy.
So, I guess, just to kind of be on your, I mean, when we start looking at the, the levels of hierarchy, and we've got, I mean, turning in here, I mean, we can't be, like, the school board can't do things that are in conflict with city code, policy, state, federal, and so forth. So, if you've got an advisory committee, unless there's something that's directed from the state, they can't be out of alignment with school board policy, because that would trump what they're doing, because they're serving for us. So, what I'm just saying back to what, what you had, Mr. Jordan, that as a board, we kind of send a direction to the administration that we need to ensure that those things are in alignment.
Right. And we've talked about it before, and I want to make sure I'm clear. I'm not suggesting that advisory committee bylaws trump school policy.
No, no, I'm not saying you are.
What I'm saying is, is that in some of the state structure, there are things in there that they get advised to do. Because our goal is to be goodwill ambassadors to these committees and have them do the work. I've said this before, I don't want us to blindside the existing committees who've been doing yeoman work, just like we got an email from GIAC the other day, to make sure we don't blindside them, and that one, you know, today, they think they have some role in recruiting and making some recommendations, and then a video goes out and they find out, oh, we don't have that anymore. I'm just saying, part of our communication and part of our community engagement, that we make sure that we bring in, perhaps, the chairs of those committees and, and discuss those things with them.
And I just want to point out and stress on that one, because I've heard that a couple of times, and I'll, I'll wrap up here, is that I don't think that what, what we're doing here takes anything away from any one of the advisory committees making recommendations or sending folks. I think what we've done today is that we have a clear place where they can make that recommendation. Fill out the application, become a part of the process, because it's going to the liaison, which at some point will still hit the committee, and hit other individuals, letting them know that these names have come through. So, I agree with you in the respect that we want to definitely be respectful of those people who've done great work, but I think that we're putting a process in place that allows them a clear, defined location for individuals who want to be applicants, so that we can track and manage, and make sure that individuals get timely responses, and have a clear process, and know what's going to happen when they actually come in and engage.
I've taken your notes, and we can always revise the video.
Yeah, the school board.
But the website is the information piece.
School board just has to make sure that it produces good policy and that it follows the policy. That's what's important. And right now, just based upon the presentation, I'm suggesting that there are some misalignments, and we need to make sure we get it aligned, in my opinion, before we, before we launch.
I don't, I don't think that that's policy. I think that's more protocol. But I think that we've adapted our policy. Now, we just need to make sure that there's good protocol that complements it.
I don't care what you call it.
It's, they're two different things.
Just, I, I know. I know. Looking at the policy in front of me, and right now, whatever policy we adopted in June is not updated.
To make sure the protocol catches up.
Yeah.
There's, there's a policy, and there's a regulation.
Okay. We'll make sure it's, well, that is very important. We make sure that it is updated. Okay. Ms. Pessine?
So, to date, we haven't had any communication with those individuals whose terms have expired. Is that correct?
Your liaison would have to tell me specifically about, like, GIAC, CAC, and CAC. As of today, I don't know specifically. This is just information they've given me about certain ones that they have vacancies with, which was ones I just mentioned to you.
Okay.
Reappointments.
I know, the CAC hasn't. We're still, they're in a holding pattern right now.
Right. But that's something I can always come back and share with you, say, hey, this is where all of them are.
Yeah. I made a recommendation that we needed, because I thought we got a listing of everybody and their terms. That we needed a letter to go out from the board, thanking them for their service, and then those who would like to reapply, giving them a place where they could reapply, and then, yeah.
Well, it's definitely work in progress.
Yeah. Great, great job, Ms. Tanner. I mean, great work. Okay. Next item, business and finance. Dr. Burtsong.
We'll provide a quarterly update to you as it relates to the status of various grants, including the Twenty First Century Fund, Holland Perkins, IDA, and I don't want to be very of a grand, so.
Good evening, Dr. Burtsong, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clayton, school board members. We had posted on Board Docs the quarterly grants report that ended June thirtieth. What I basically wanted to do is point out a few items for you, and if you have any questions, I can answer those for you. Basically, the report shows for you each of our federal grants and each of our state grants, the award year, the start date, the original award, the total expenditures and encumbered dollars as of June thirtieth, any remaining balances, excuse me, the percentage of the award that has been used, and when is the end date for spending for those grants, and then the final deadline for reimbursements. Typically, on federal grants, the reimbursement is about forty-five days after the end of when you can spend the funds. The couple of grants that I want to call to your attention, excuse me. The couple of grants that I wanted to call to your attention, excuse me, that usually I know you're interested in is Title I. I'm pleased to say that we have met eighty-five percent that we are required to spend for, um, CH 119, Title I, uh, for this fiscal year. And then the ongoing grant, CH 118, we're still in a good position. All of the program managers have plans to have all funds spent by the deadlines. So we feel like we're in good position there. Um, the other grant that I want to call your attention to that you may be wondering about is Title I Part A School Improvement. You may see where there are no dollars spent and that is because we got the award in June.
Okay.
So that's why you don't see any expenditures there. So if you have any other questions about any grant, um, I'm willing to answer the financial piece and if there's anything in particular, programmatic pieces, um, Dr. Cataldo and others are in the room to answer the programmatic pieces.
All right.
Ms. Kim.
And I was looking at this earlier, when I was looking at it on Board Docs. So what we, the school, I was under the understanding that the school improvement grant was gone and replaced by the ESA grant. If, if my, could you give me an update on, on?
This is, it came back with funding for school improvement. I believe that's the actual titleing of it is school improvement.
But it's the ESA money then?
I have gone back to the funding sources.
Yes.
It is, that's ESA.
That's ESA.
And, and so what's the date on that? Is that a twenty nineteen, twenty twenty?
Yes, funds for the award we got, if you see the first award, we had, look like two awards. The SI 219, we have until September twenty twenty to spend those dollars.
So that, so we don't have one of these?
That's ending this September, no.
No, okay, so basically, we had a year of, of no funding from this grant.
Yes.
And so the one that they just gave us in June is, is now what, a twenty twenty?
Twenty, we have until September.
Twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one?
We have until September 30, twenty twenty, to do the first grant that's listed there. Cause there's two, they're listed separately, cause they're coming from different funding sources and the federal government. So when you see Title I, one zero zero three A, that one, we have until September 30, twenty twenty. And the one that's coming from one zero zero three G, we have until September 30, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Is the award year on G correct?
That's the award year from the federal dollars, yes.
And this is.
It took them that long to give it to us?
A lot of times with these, if they have funding left from an award year, they will reappropriate it when they give us additional dollars. So with the school improvement one, they probably look back and said, from award year twenty eighteen, we had additional dollars that they then reallocated to the divisions.
So with, with the, the school improvement slash ESA money that we did not get this past year and now is all going together to be spent in the upcoming year by twenty twenty, um, is that designated for the ESA schools? Is that go, all, does all of that go to ESA schools?
Yes.
For a certain school, Dr. Cataldo.
We have nine, what, nine schools that that money is being allocated to.
Are there some ESA schools that aren't getting it?
Are, um, no. I mean, I guess we have other ESA schools, but, uh, the nine are the ones that the state appropriated to.
Also, the, the state chooses.
Or federal government, yeah.
The, well, through the state. They choose which school the money goes to.
Uh, do they choose which school? Okay, Jamie.
They do, so we don't have any, so if we look and we have some other ESA schools, we, that's not, we just go with the ones they tell us.
Correct.
With, no, no.
Since all, and remember the application process, we were talking about last fiscal year and it was taking so long and going back and forth to state. So they identified the schools and they had to approve the plan and the application. So we have to use it for only those schools.
Was that delayed totally on their part? Did they, was it delayed for all the, all of the districts in the state or, or was there a stumbling block at, at NPS?
No, was it, was it at the state level?
It was all, so no, no districts in the state got that money?
No, I don't believe so. We did not get the money and, uh, our executive director's been working really, uh, well with the state. Uh, Ms. Rabel, Bev Rabel and April Kaiser Edwards. And they're working with them to, uh, ensure that, uh, we have really tight plans. Uh, but since the money was awarded.
Was there a problem with the plans we sent in?
No.
So we were just like every other district. No one got it until the summer.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's the clarification from me. All right, thank you.
Mr. Clanton?
So, uh, Ms. Ingram, on page two, the Title III Part A immigrant and youth. I know there, um, says zero to spend on that one, but what, what is that funding utilized for that grant?
That funding is, uh, Title III and it's actually a, a separate grant. It comes from a, a different, uh, uh, funding source. And we use that for a lot of our summer programs. So that money would be used by the end of this summer, even though we have until, uh, September to actually spend that money. So we do spend all of that. And usually it's programs that help students that are new to the area. Uh, L students, uh, English learners. Uh, and it's, uh, part of it is introduction to the school, uh, introduction to the division as a whole and then really working with programs. Uh, we've actually had a couple, two programs this past, we have one coming up shortly, uh, but one that, that we had this past year at Tanner's Creek. So we're able to use funds for those things, yeah.
So is there a particular, is it coming out of grant money in regards to bilingual, different, um, you know, documents, things like that we're using to try to be more?
Correct, yes, we have programs. And if you look at that Title III money, you'll see that we have, uh, there's about forty-two percent has been used. But we actually have programs that, um, are coming online and are gonna be using up all those funds. But that's really how we track students, how we make sure that they get the Access for Ls test. Uh, that, that, all that information is captured and then that we're able to appropriate, uh, the, um, the, the teachers, the L teachers, that we just got an extra one from the board this past year. So we're really excited about that. So making sure that we're getting everyone enough minutes and that they're getting that coverage that they need.
Unless there are any further questions, we can go ahead and move on to the next topic then. Thank you very much, Ms. Ingram. Okay. Next topic is our policy discussion. I know we have quite a few policies that the V S B A is, um, gives to us in batches. But let's, um, first, uh, discuss, uh, the items with regards to timelines for recess. So I'll let, uh, Ms. Martin and Ms. Basine and then I'll.
Um, we were waiting, so at our last meeting, we were waiting for the administration to come back with a timeline for the, um, recess dis- discussion. Dr. Birdsong, have.
Yes, so thank you, we have met to- together as, um, an executive leadership team. And, um, Dr. Cataldo, this evening is, um, prepared to share a timeline.
Okay, great.
Um, attended a timeline.
Great, okay.
So, Dr. Cataldo, if you don't mind?
That saves me from presenting.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, yes, so at the July tenth meeting that we had, uh, the school board retreat, it was discussed at that meeting about coming up with a timeline, uh, to, uh, kind of look at our recess and where we were, were with that, uh, as well as looking at, uh, PE and going from the one hundred minutes to one hundred and fifty minutes. So what I've done is, uh, worked with our teams. Elementary principals have met, uh, we've met with the, um, some of the, the, um, the recess, uh, meetings that we, that the, the folks from the recess committee that have come to us at the board and spoken several times. So we've met with them and we've, uh, also met with, um, additional principals to find out what their concerns are. So this is our proposed timeline. So we did that work in June and July. And then July, August, really what we wanna do is we wanna work with the principals and help define what does recess mean? Is it structured time, is it unstructured time? So I think it's important that we all have that same definition of what, uh, what we classify as recess. Then we can go into the schools and determine during blocks of unstructured time, this is what would be called recess and we can kind of go from the same page. So that was really the first part of it. Um, also, we wanna survey, uh, the current practices. You know, do schools, are they, is it mandatory twenty minutes? Are they some doing twenty-five minutes, some thirty, some fifteen? Now, based on policy, it should be twenty minutes. So that's what we wanna ensure is happening. So we're really gonna be doing a self-audit to determine that our recess times are appropriate uh, to what has already been passed. And then we will look at making recommendations, uh, with the principals to ensure or find out how we can add some instructional time. So that's July, August, and then towards the end of August, we're gonna look at specific instructional minutes of each school. So we're gonna look at each school, all of our elementary schools, and really determine how much instructional time, uh, do they have? And if we were to increase the amount of recess in those schools, how would that impact instructional time? How would that impact programs? How would that impact our, um, English block, our math block, additional electives, lunch? And so then in September, uh, we're gonna look at the options to add time to recess. So we're gonna look at if, if an extended day might be, may be needed. Uh, if there's, uh, a change in program times potentially, uh, any kind of other options. And we're gonna be ready by, uh, the fifteenth, so a week before the Policy Review Committee meets, we're gonna have recommendations to you of what we believe, uh, is the best path forward. Uh, the, the Policy Review Committee is usually the committee that makes those policy recommendations and brings those to the board. So we, we believe we'll be ready by that time to be able to make that level of, uh, recommendation for you all.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, the other thing, the one word that you didn't say, which you, I think was implied, but I just wanna make it explicit, is that in our policy meeting, we talked about the consistency of the implementation and making, so, yeah. So just, um, so part of, uh, Dr. Cataldo's meetings with, with the principals was to really listen to how it's being implemented in the elementary schools and then, um, determining how consistent that is.
Mm-hmm, and that's, that self-audit that we're gonna be doing, that's gonna help us determine that and get to that, those specific areas.
Okay, Ms. Basine?
And to, to clarify too, um, so we are not having a policy committee meeting this month. So our next one will be in September.
September twentieth.
Yep.
So, um, that's great for recess. What about the, um, the separate policy with, um, PE?
With the PE, yes, we're, at that time, we're also, and I failed to put that on there, but we're gonna have that same policy. So those two policies, which is IGAE and IGAF, uh, they will be, we'll have that together. Of course, it'll be two separate things, but we'll be bringing them both to that September twentieth meeting, providing recommendations. We have talked a little bit about the recommendations, uh, and some of the implications earlier, but we have, uh, wanna get some additional information for you and have that all ready at the same time.
So what would be really, um, beneficial to know is that for agenda planning purposes, um, whatever recommendations that come from the policy committee, how you want to present them to the board and then what we need to know as far as action that needs to be taken, if there's a public hearing that we need to, uh, to, to, to do, to plan for. So all of those items, budgetary, um, items, because I know the, the PE one might have budgetary implications. So just tell us what, what your timeline is so that we can make sure that we appropriately put time in our agenda for it.
We'll have that ready.
Great, that's terrific. Ms. Basine?
So, and, and then the next piece on the V S B A.
Oh, before you go ahead.
Oh.
So I'm, I'm just a little confused, so what, what are we doing? We are, they're doing, there's, uh, administrative review processes going on to inform how we may change times associated with recess. Is that where we're going?
I think there are a couple of things going on.
Okay.
Um, so I recall during the July tenth meeting, we were asked to, moving forward, look how we could bring the school wellness policy in alignment with, um, health and physical education. And so we're looking at a timeline for that. And we're looking to see, you know, how much the financial implications for doing so. And so we, we need to review all of that. And, and certainly we need, um, input from the principals to be able to tell you specifically what that would look like. And so I, I know there was, um, an interest, um, or we had, um, community members from, um, Virginians for more recess, that Whitney Davis represented that group. I'd had an opportunity to meet with her as well. And so it's my understanding that she's hosting a community meeting, um, tomorrow with, with some of our principals to talk about, um, why perhaps, um, they would have concerns about twenty twenty, but, or twenty minutes of recess in the morning and afternoon by twenty twenty. So there can be some dialogue and exchange, so they can, uh, hear each other's, um, perspectives. So yes, we were, we, we're looking at both of those things separately.
Okay, so I, I have a couple requests then.
Okay.
Whatever, what you're presenting, can you email out to us later? Cause I'm visual.
Sure.
It'll be helpful to understand that. The other.
So the timeline, present the timeline.
Yeah, cause I, cause what I, I follow what Dr. Birdsong said in terms of what I knew we were discussing at the retreat as far as the, my words, the, the PE policy. I know the conversation we've had about the recess, we've had conversations around alignment. But almost going back to the, uh, my same comment with the, um, student health advisory, the student advisory committees, we made some changes to a policy.
Yes, we did.
And I know I had a whole lot of recommendations, I didn't put them on the table at the time because I wanted to give the policy committee and others to kind of update on the board what the current policy is.
Right.
So I just wanna make sure I'm following, so I know as a board member, what is the process in which, if there are, once I see what we finally voted on in terms of the current student wellness policy?
So we voted to change that from one hundred fifty minutes to a hundred.
Right.
Um, knowing that there needed to be a plan moving forward.
Right, but then, but in that wellness policy, there's some additional things we needed to, I think we need to clean up. And in your timeline, as I understand it, under what I think the current policy is, there's a role that the SHAC is supposed to play in that. So again, I just wanna make sure in terms of, as we are, have staff out there doing all this work, that we are being streamlined and efficient and, you know, also including, if it's required, whatever role that our advisory committees are to play in terms of their review and feedback.
So in the SHAC committee meeting, um, the recommendation came up that we have, um, the Principals Association, um, get input from, um, more recess. And so this is, I mean, this, this kind of happened out of the meeting that you will have. So that was one of the next steps that came from the, the Student Health Advisory Committee. Because it, it's, it's really about, as you said, finding the impact of what does adding more recess time have to a principal's mind when they're trying to think instruction, 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 accountability? How does this impact their schedule? And so we really, um, which I thought was a great suggestion to get them both on the same page so that they can figure out maybe how can they, um, come together and hear each other out of what their, um, concerns are and come to a, a good agreement, so.
And I'm comfortable with that, I just think it's important that we're clear on the role of the board member liaisons to the committee, the role of the committee, the role of the policy committee, what, what we are tasking the administration to do in any of the meetings that we're having so that we are streamlined and efficient, that's all. And, and in accordance with whatever our policy and regulations say.
Ms. Basine?
Yeah, and, um, to clarify, so the, the timeline that Dr. Cataldo is bringing forward was, was originally, it was supposed to come to the policy committee, um, in September.
Correct.
Before coming here today. So the next time, the next policy discussion for the full board will be in October. Um, so that way we had a chance to really vet what the timeline is gonna be and, um, talk about that, so there isn't confusion. And the other piece with the, separate from the recess, the health ed, um, physical education and the school wellness policy, they are currently, last month, we adopted policies that they are now in alignment. Um, so in going forward, that, um, coming up with a plan, whether we could do the hundred and fifty minutes is what we're moving toward. And that is something that the SHAC has also recommended, um, to, to maintain i- in the school wellness policy. Um, so I just wanted to be clear, clear about that, that that discussion has happened. Also, we talked about, um, um, at the last, there, there is a lot of cleanup that is required and there's a lot of what I call like policy clutter. There's a lot of information in both policies which, um, holds us up, I think, when we're trying to consistently, trying to align two policies. Whereas if we just direct to one, and that was one of the things that, um, I said that I would, and if anyone has any recommendations on that as well, but to bring a draft and the policy committee is gonna look at that as well with those two policies.
I'm sorry, what is the ask that you're asking us again?
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking anything, I'm just telling you where we are with the, with the policy committee, where we are. Um, Dr. Birdsong just mentioned the alignment piece and I'm just letting you know that, reminding everyone that we voted to align the two policies. They are now. They are now in alignment.
Yeah.
The 100 minutes.
And what we're moving forward in, what the discussion really is, is about how do we plan for that? Can we plan for that 150 minutes?
Yeah, that's that timeline.
Which is what that timeline is.
Right.
But going forward, we're, in September, as we have a meeting, the policy committee is not meeting until the 20th of September. So we will be bringing forward any policies for that October work session.
Got it.
So as you plan for agenda planning, you know that.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify some of those pieces.
Yeah, so it's still, it's still in that streamline where we had recommendation, we agreed to move forward on it. The district leadership team is doing their due diligence. Then they're reporting it back. I guess, you know, we're having this discussion. We'll ta, we'll talk about it in more detail at the policy committee meeting, and then it'll be brought to the full board in the new, in the latest form for our October meeting.
Great, okay. All right, for the work session, you'll be bringing forward that information for that work session. Okay, all right, great. Okay, VSBA updates.
And that, that too is going to come to the policy committee. The district leadership team hadn't had a chance to vet all of those updates. So we agreed to come back in September when they'd had a chance to have their meeting and bring it to the policy committee for any, any ones that are, and then we'll bring those forward in October.
At our policy, sorry, at our policy committee meeting, it was Ms. Tanner and Dr. Cataldo's first time meeting. And so we did take an opportunity to bring them up to speed on the process and their roles. So we spent, you know, a good amount of time on that. But again, without having the recommendations from the district leadership team, we couldn't move forward on several of the policies. So we're gonna approach this.
And those recommendations will all be in by that September 20th meeting.
So let me ask a question. If there are recommendations that are coming with the VSBA that are merely legal changes?
We talked about that.
Yes.
We did talk about that at our meeting on, on this past Tuesday. And so next Tuesday, members of the team will be just talking about those changes and moving those policies forward. Because there's no reason.
It's just a transition period, so we're a little behind.
Right, and plus the summer, and, you know, people.
Sure.
Yeah.
We're only gonna bring policies that have implications.
Okay, so then let me, let me ask this then. We were looking at the work session for September, that second week of September, and we had allocated time for policy. Should we not have a policy item on the agenda because you guys are in transition?
No, because we don't need till after that.
Okay, all right, fair enough, all right.
So put this on for October?
Got it, it will be on every work session as we're following this new piece. Okay, well, thank you both.
Thank you, Dr. Cataldo.
Okay, all right. We're a little bit behind schedule, but let's go ahead and move towards our matters of the board. Let me organize my notes for just a second here. Here we go. So at our last meeting, Dr. Berzong was able to present her entry plan to us. And we requested if there was any feedback to be provided to her. And thank you all for the feedback that has been shared. Dr. Berzong has been made aware of all the feedback. I, my plan was to consolidate, you know, like items, but everything was kinda different. You really couldn't consolidate very much. So she has the feedback that has been provided by the members who have turned it in. And I think it's valuable, and nothing really further on that point.
Given my feedback? Was she giving my feedback?
Your, did you send it to email?
Yeah, and you responded, got it.
Okay, did you copy Ms. Tanner?
I replied to everyone.
Okay, then we'll have to go back and make sure that she got it, because.
I do recall receiving something from Mrs. Smith, Ms. Smith.
Okay, I apologize if it wasn't, actually, I know it wasn't included in the document because the only ones that I have are from myself, Ms. Campson, and Ms. Basine. So we'll make sure that your feedback is there for notation purposes. But if you, pretty sure you got some.
I did see an email from Ms. Smith.
So then just make sure that we copy Ms. Tanner on everything just in case something slips through.
And I apologize, I may have missed it because Dr. Berzong said I was gonna give you some comments in the Word docs, but I never saw them. I don't, yeah, I think we may have missed that. And it's not much. But the other thing I would ask, if we would, the comments that we have here are additional feedback, but we also had feedback at the meeting. And so if we can go back into the minutes and make sure that we include that, that feedback as part of, as part of the response back, I think that would be helpful as well. But if you can get a chance to send me those documents, I'll send you those comments. I said I would send them.
Does it have to be a Word, PDF?
I was doing it for your sake, because I thought it was easier to go in and you would just see the comments. But if you'd rather for me to do it on PDF, I can.
That's fine, that's fine.
And so if you all are perusing the board docs and you see something that is missing, like Ms. Smith, if your comments aren't there, email us and let us know because it was probably just an oversight on our part. And we certainly wanna make sure that all of the data is there as it should be. Okay, all right. Update on the RFQ process. So when we were discussing the RFQ process, this is in context of our superintendent search. We discussed going with an RFQ process. The application is out there. We talked about, I asked Ms. Campson if she could serve as liaison. She graciously accepted. Ms. Campson, if you could bring the board up to speed on any work items?
Well, just real quick at the moment, as you all know, the, the online already, Carol Robinson has already posted the job off.
Return.
The S, whatever it's called. Anyway, right, and, and we are accepting bids through the 15th. At that time, they'll be collecting them all day through the 15th. And then there is, no Friday. It's our last four-day week. And so on the 19th, as already was on the schedule, all of those will be made available to board members so that you will have a chance. Ms. Robinson will be sending those directly to all board members. They won't have to go through anyone else for a wash. And you'll have time to then review them all, ask questions. This is certainly the first time I'll be looking at that kind of document. I would, I certainly appreciate the fact that I'll have time to do that. At this point, I'm not sure when we'll be coming. We need to then come back together and make a choice. On a vendor, I did contact Ms. Robinson to see how long it then took for the vendor and her to collaborate and then have a contract signed. And it can go relatively quickly, once we get to the point, once we've made our choice. And so that's where we are now. And I, you know, look to the, to the agenda set, I mean, the, yeah, the time for that meeting. That'll be, I think what we're gonna have to understand is that throughout this process, we're gonna have to have some extra meetings. I don't know if we wanna wait forever on each thing that comes up. So that's the next thing that we'll have to be talking about. That'll be, and I'll discuss where I am with it. And then, of course, the three of you who do the agenda will do that. And there'll be, I guess, like call meetings, is that what you call them? But I, we discussed this earlier, that we're gonna have to have some extra meetings to be able to have time to, first of all, choose our vendor, the headhunters, and then to set up times to review the applications as they start coming in. I'm thinking that that would be a rolling thing as they come in. They would be sent on to the board so that we don't all of a sudden get them dumped on us. And we'll have a timeline for the time that that can go. So we'll be needing, meeting along the way to look at applications and, you know, eliminate some and put some on the, you know, how you kinda do that. Oh, this is the no stack and this is the yes, let's continue on and bring them in for an interview. And that means in interview, we have to decide, do we want each interview to have the whole board? Or do we wanna have representatives and teams interview? I guess that'll depend on how many candidates we choose to interview. But that's gonna be more times, you know, that you'll be called upon. And that might influence whether we wanna have everyone. Kinda feel like I'd like to listen to all of them, or at least the last three or so. But everyone might have a different opinion about that. And we can't schedule those times ahead because we have to also, the candidates could be coming from any place in the country. And so we have to kinda work with their schedules too. So I think we're gonna see some rolling times pop up. And we don't wanna get into a long back-and-forth scheduling thing with that. So we're gonna have to look at when a candidate's able to come. And then, and within that window, what we can do. So I think this is a kind of a flexibility time because I know that every single member of this board, this is our biggest job, is choosing a superintendent. And I know everyone wants to be as deeply involved as they can. Certainly, we'll try and take into consideration, I won't be scheduling anything. This will be, all this will be, all the scheduling will be done by the vendors that are leading the superintendent search. So you'll start seeing things come up. When we get, once we get the vendors in, we meet with them, once they're chosen, we'll be meeting with them to make sure that they have a clarification of everything that this board is looking for. So that we don't get a lot of things coming in. You know, they're just baseline things like certification, which is required by the state, and experience and all those things. So anyway, that's just kind of in a nutshell where we are with it.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much. Are there any questions on that? So moving on next, we had talked about our board calendar and making sure that we had a calendar that both we could follow, the members of the public could have access to, basically put on our board meetings. Those meetings could be then hyperlinked to the agenda on board docs. It could be aligned with the various committees and programs that we serve on. And Ms. Tanner has also been working very hard to get this up and running. I know that when we discussed this last time that we were, there was some concern about not having it go live just yet. Some board members wanted to have some further input. So I'll just turn it over to Ms. Tanner to walk us through it one more time. And then, any questions that you all have?
Okay, is it okay if I do it from here so then I can just pop some things up? Again, trying to send folks more to the school board's website to find out just what's happening for transparency purposes, to see the school board meetings, the conferences and different things that they have going on. If it comes like a board meeting, they could actually go to the website, click on it, and it takes them straight, you click here and it takes you straight to the board docs page. So it's not a whole lot of clicking around. But when they go straight to that school board's calendar, it'll jump them straight to the agenda and they can go find out what's happening for that particular meeting for them. And this may be the third bullet. It's just live today, just so we could work in and then look at it along with the school board advisory tab. For the calendar, you all have a hard copy, but I've already sent it to some of the board members just to see what's already been populated there. And again, it's on our district website, which is good. We have control over it and we're able to do what we need to do. So right now, we just have agenda planning, school board meetings and conferences and work sessions populated here. But any other activities and events, say, we have back to school. You all may be at a certain school, certain events. Those, that information will be on the school board's calendar as well.
Great.
Question?
Oh, Mr. Jordan, Ms. Smith?
Look, can you just, I'm sorry, can you clarify again? So this is, I get the public, the purpose for the public. How does this impact my individual calendar and coordination and outlook and all that stuff? I'm not, I'm still not clear on that. And then, secondarily, you said you sent it to some school board members. Can you send it to all of us?
Well, they had requested, can I see like a copy of what it looks like visually? But I knew we were gonna be here today. And I put it on board docs.
Yeah, I know, that's awesome. Because I just wanna be able to test it out because I just wanna make sure that, again, that we aren't creating, you know, multiple calendars that we gotta manage.
This would not house your person, your personal calendar, no. This will be all board functions and activities that you participate in. I mean, if it's something that the full board, like there's an event going on Saturday on the 10th. If you, that could possibly be something.
Elevate to educate on Saturday.
Right.
Could not remember the name of it.
That could possibly be there as some of your activities. But not your personal calendar's not gonna be here.
Right, but even using that as an example. So if we get an invitation to participate in something, that doesn't make it a board function. It's just a invitation for board members to participate in something. So I just wanna make sure.
Well, I will populate it if you all are going. I would put that there, but if you're not going, I wouldn't put it there.
In other words, you still get our calendar invites through Outlook.
Yeah.
So that would come from the clerk saying, here's an option, whatever event came in, and we all click on it, yes, no, we're coming. But I think you're saying that if we agree that we're going to, and a board member's gonna be present, you're gonna populate it here for the public to be able to know that we're gonna be present there.
Right. It may seem like a lot of work, but it's also.
Yeah, I think it's, I don't have a problem with the transparency piece. But again, I just, I'm worried about all the multiple things we got out there.
Well, it's, it's really also.
That's why I like the.
It's really also to help us to organize the fact that we have a lot of training dates and conference dates. And so if it's on our calendar that, you know, Cube is at this time and NSBA is at this time, that is on there so that everybody is aware of what the date. I mean, we get it also through her, from, you know, through Word document. But it's also helpful to know, you know, how those conferences might overlap with, you know, a work session, for example.
But, but you're kinda making my point. So right now, I know I can pull up my phone. If Ms. Tanner or anybody sends me an invite to a facilities committee meeting, I get the invite, I can put it on my phone, it falls on my calendar. I can get reminders and so forth. So if the purpose of this calendar is to, just to let the public know what I'm doing as a school board member, I kinda get that. If I'm being asked to now do additional responses, so if I need to tell Ms. Tanner that I'm gonna be at, you're shaking your head.
You don't need to.
Let me finish. If I'm being asked to respond to the board clerk that I'm gonna be at the event at Little Creek on Saturday, then I need to know that so that I am following whatever the procedures are so the information can get out there. Otherwise, I won't know. So I will respond, I can respond. I get, as you all know, we get invitations to do stuff all the time. So if the intent is for all the requests that we receive, to send them to the board clerk, and then the board clerk is gonna populate it on the calendar, I just wanna know what those procedures are. If that's not the case, then I also wanna know because I don't want it to be suggested that I'm not sharing information that I should be sharing.
I see what you're saying there. I mean, it's just major board things. Like if our, our meetings, our trainings, our retreats, our conferences, and then I guess even our ceremonies would be, because this is, this calendar is on the board's page, right?
Yes, yeah.
So I wouldn't say like, you know, if I was gonna go read, unless it was like Read Across America Day. But if I was going to Southside STEM to go read, I wouldn't expect the clerk to put that on this calendar up here. I think it's, I think we can agree to say that it's the major things that the board is doing. No, you raise, you raise a great point, but I don't think that's what we're asking.
Right, right. So like our legislative day will be, will be.
Like our legislative day as well, yeah.
Our school board recognition ceremony dates will be put up there. What else do we have? Read Across America.
So can we just agree to what Mr. Jordan was saying? That it's, the things that are being populated up here are things that involve.
Entire school board.
The entire school board. Or I guess you could really say if it's three or more of us. It's gonna require a public.
But I'm still gonna get a Outlook.
Yeah, we should still get an Outlook. We're gonna still get an Outlook. I don't think that changes.
Yeah, and also too, you have people in the community that want to invite you to things. So now they can come look here and say, okay, well, the board, you know, they may be free here. Let me look at the calendar and invite them to my event because I'm gonna plan it around that.
You're not gonna get my personal calendar on that thing.
And we don't want your personal calendar.
Or my available.
So then, so I would, I would like to have.
Big brother.
I would like to be able to allow Ms. Tanner to make this live, knowing that, you know, dates can change, situations come up. This is fluid, but this is a step in the right direction to putting information out there on the board, meeting time structures, et cetera. Ms. Smith?
I have one question. It's with November 20th and our 4:00 p.m. board member, board meeting and the VSBA annual convention. So that convention, I didn't attend this previous school year. On that first day, what are the times of the convention? And do they allow partial payment? What I'm trying to decide is, do I not go to the convention at all because we have this 4:00 p.m. board meeting? Or can you go to certain parts of it and just pay for that and then be back? Because it's in Williamsburg, if I'm not mistaken, this one is. And then just be back in time enough for the 4:00 p.m. board meeting?
So those are the.
What's the date?
What's the date?
You're talking about the 20th? So the 20th is early bird. So there's some, it's like before the convention actually kicks off. So there's some early bird sessions that are going on there if you want to go. And I think they start from 9:30 to noon and then they have something in the afternoon.
Is that September?
No, no.
That's November.
Oh, November.
Right. And then in the, in the evening time during our board meeting, they have a reception type air, type function. And I'm not sure what else it was. The, it doesn't preclude you from attending the Thursday, the great meeting sessions on Thursday and then Friday. So I don't think that I've, I've ever heard the V S B A having partial payment. But the events that we would theoretically miss if we were holding a board meeting at four o'clock is just a reception.
Yeah, I'm pulling up the, so on the 20th.
Session starts on the 20th. What we've done in the past is we've rescheduled our regular meetings so we didn't have the conflict.
Yeah. So we, you're right, because.
What time is that general session?
Two to four. And then we have the regional meetings at 4:30. And then there's the president's reception. Are we getting special invitations, Mr. Jordan?
I'm not the president. Everybody's invited.
So then, if, if the board, if the will of the board is to reschedule our meeting for the preceding week, the next, the following week is Thanksgiving, then I would need to know from the board members what your, what your desire is. If you want, based on what the V S B A has planned for Thursday.
Yeah. Actually, this is one of those situations that came up in governor's training. We have to move it. We can't be like some other board that tried to have the meeting there.
I don't want to have it one soon.
Tried to have the meeting at the convention.
Oh, who did? I don't remember that.
There's another part of the state, but no, we can't do that.
Ms. Smith, were there any other questions that you had with the calendar? Okay. So can we go ahead and make the calendar live then? Is that, is anybody opposed to making it live right now?
No, I just want to make that it's the master calendar. So it's not an individual, it's our master dates.
Major dates, yeah.
Major dates?
Are we changing the business meeting in November?
Um, no.
What's that?
I'm going to let everybody kind of come back to me about that.
In November, we tried to have just one meeting. Cause we had the work session and the business meeting combined because we had Veterans Day and.
And I think it's.
Very open to doing that too.
And then we have our legislative date too.
Two meetings to one meeting, we can do that too.
So I would suggest we look at the 13th as a possible meeting date.
Okay. Do, okay, I just want to make sure everyone is understanding what is being put on the table now.
I can't, I can't meet on the 13th.
Well, whatever, some day prior to, other than.
Okay, well, right now, we. We could, we have a meeting scheduled for the 6th. See, that's, Dr. Birdsong, if you don't mind, if we can just put the information out to say, would board members consider a single meeting on the 6th to combine both work session and formal meeting? And then that way we.
That would date work for everyone.
I'm in agreement with that now.
Wait, wait, don't tell me.
Can we, can we agree to it now?
I'm fine. I just want to make sure everybody understands what we're agreeing to.
November 6th. We'll start the work session. Will there be a work session component and a business meeting component?
Let's talk about that in agenda planning.
Okay.
I'm, I'm missing. So the, the work session on November 6th is being moved to.
No, no, listen.
It will remain on the 6th and it will become a business meeting. It could be a work session slash business meeting.
And then the meeting on the 20th then is canceled. Okay. Because that's when we'll be going to.
That is a great suggestion.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
So we'll be doing financial, personnel, you know, all of those items there. And then we can discuss it in agenda planning. Ms. Smith?
And while we're, we're on the agenda, I will be late to the October 16th meeting.
Okay.
That's it that I have right now.
All right.
Can we have Ms. Tanner also send that out to us?
Yes. Ms. Tanner, would you mind sending that information out to us about the combined meeting for November the 6th?
So just a point, I'm not going to be here November 6th. It's my final dress run for Hill Postino, the opera, so I won't be here.
Ooh, what was that? You're going to do the opera again?
Yeah.
Need to get that on my calendar too.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is merely, I've received everybody's committee assignments. Ms. Tanner has put them into a document for everyone to understand. And at this point in time, you should be getting the dates of the meetings for the committees that you have graciously volunteered.
This is the one you've already sent us that we have already?
Yes. It's on Board Docs right now. That is the most up-to-date document that we have.
Dr. Gabriel, I was still waiting. I thought we were going to get a form, but I would like to, looking at this document, would like to continue with Council of Great City Schools as liaison there. The H R, the Heretta and W H R O are one and the same. So I think we have it listed twice. So I think we need to fix that. I see that you've listed yourself as North Council of P T As. I'd be more than happy to join you or be an alternate there or, or do that role if, if it frees up some time for you. And I think that was, and if anybody liked to come off policy, I'd be more than happy to go back. But those are the main ones I wanted to put forward.
Mr. Jordan, do you remind repeating that?
Council of Great City Schools.
Yes.
North Council of P T As.
Okay.
And if others need an alternate on something, if they let me know, then I would be willing to work with them to be an alternate if needed.
All right. All right. Next item on the agenda, feedback for clerk of the school board job description. So we have, Ms. Tanner is, is acting as our acting clerk right now. We all said that we would come back to a discussion with the board about any changes, amendments that we wanted to do for the current job description before it is posted. And I do think that it's important for the board to be able to provide feedback on what we currently have, especially being that we've kind of gone through a year with a variety of individuals in this capacity and understanding what the needs of the board are. So what I was going to do is, Ms. Basine and Ms. Smith, if, if you all would be willing to gather information from the board on suggestions for the clerk job description and then be able to basically assemble those points and then come back to the board and present what the feedback is and offer suggestions. So that way we can give direction to the superintendent for posting of this, of any type of modified or revised job description. Would you all be amenable to that?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Basine? Okay.
Just asking for feedback on any changes to the job description?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I guess I'm wondering why we're not talking about it as a full board versus.
No, they're not saying. Some recommendations in the full board within act.
So we'll send our suggestions.
Just send suggestions, right.
Can we do it by the August business meeting?
It can be, they can come back and say, we would, you can create a timeline. You know, you can say, we need feedback by this date, we're going to present it on this date and we want to have it out by such and such date.
Yeah. I mean, I'm ready to work on it. If you all, if we want to try to have a draft for August 1st. The August business meeting, which is.
Two weeks.
Yep. On the 21st, then.
Oh, that's perfect.
Let's, yeah. How about by Friday? Or even next, next Wednesday? I mean, can we do that? Is a week enough time for, for you all to get us feedback?
I think so. I mean, it's already done. Adding recommendations.
Well, we're going to be together for a couple days.
Well, yeah, that's true. Yeah, we could talk about it. They could definitely have it back till Wednesday.
Did we already get a copy of this?
Yeah.
It's on Board Docs.
I'm good for Wednesday.
Send me a copy. I want a copy.
Just let us know when you like the feedback then.
On the 21st, I will arrive late to that meeting as well. It's another date that I have continuing education training already scheduled.
Well, just send us the date, send us the date that you want us to have the feedback by. And then, and, and then you'll be able to present at, you know, August 21st meeting or a different.
The September meeting. Yeah, I don't think there's a huge rush.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Okay. Selecting a conference at all school board. You were voluntold for that one.
Madam Chair, if, if the board is willing, I'm more than happy to yield my one minute for 9.05 and the 10 minutes for 9.07 for action at another meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, how are the dates coming?
So then, so then what, what we'll say then is, Mr. Jordan, then if you could pull the board into one meeting that we could all possibly attend, that would be great.
Yeah, I just think it should fall with the discussion with the accountability plan and under board distinction.
We can do that, yep. Okay. So now, 9.07, Mr. Jordan.
Oh, I would say I was, I was willing to yield that as well unless the board just feels compelled to discuss it today. I've shared with you, I've shared this document many times, it's there. You'll see on the attachments that my, my point is, is I think that as a board, we need to have clarification around what our expectations are regarding our legal services and also be able to coordinate that with the city. I pulled up the Virginia Beach model as an example. And really part of the, the basis of that is, I think, at least in my experience and sitting in on sessions, that there's a tendency amongst boards who have to pay by the hour for their attorneys to be judicious in what they task. And boards who have arrangements like we have, have the tendency to send a whole lot of stuff to, to the attorneys. And I think we just need to make sure we're clear on what our expectations are and, and make sure that we are respectful of their time and, and make sure that we are tasking our administration to do their roles appropriately and have the attorneys to continue to provide us with advice and consent. But rather than going through all that, I think if you take the time and just review it and just give some sense whether or not this is something you think we should do. And then if so, then we can decide what next steps are moving forward. If not, then there's no point in just talking about it.
Okay. Then so the next item on our agenda is school board training. So training encompasses two things. Just want to make sure that everybody is clear. We have governance training, which this board has committed to. Governance training is how our board is working together in conjunction with the superintendent. So a governance team is the board and the superintendent. And then we have other training sessions, professional development, that we can go to with a variety of school board agencies. And so, two separate items. So what I would first like to discuss is that we have an updated calendar now that Ms. Tanner has provided to us for the conferences, whether it be Council of Great City School, Cube, V S B A, N S B A. And then there's a conference that you were interested in attending and you wanted to bring it to our attention as I put on there, the Model Schools Conference. That is an option. So that way, we all know the dates that are there. And to please let Ms. Tanner know as far ahead of time as possible so that way she can do whatever travel arrangements you all have agreed to. So it doesn't have to go through. Just make sure you're letting her know what conferences you want to attend, okay? And if there is something that is not on this list, make sure you just share that with the board so that we all know where folks are going. Okay. Are there any questions as far as these conferences go?
I have one point of clarity. So I don't need chair and vice chair approval in order to get registered for a conference.
No, as long as it's one of the ones that are here that we all are aware of, no. But if it's something different, like say Urban Music Conference.
That's something that would impact our budget as a whole. I just want to make sure it's clarity because I've been, I want to make sure that we're clear. If I went to register for any of these conferences, that we are members.
Right.
That you contact the clerk and the clerk will coordinate with the superintendent, whoever, whatever else that the clerk is supposed to do internally so we can get registered and travel arrangements made and participate and eventually come back and report to the board what we did.
Yes. And I think that you had made the point about there being some hot topics or other items that the V S B A offer that may not be directly on here. So we would need to, you know, put those on here as items for consideration as well. Okay?
And I'll ask Karen.
Yes.
Are we going to confirm the 24th or 25th today, today for January?
Okay, that, I'm going to talk about that in a second. I just wanted to first get through the conferences.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on the conferences? So then the other item, which has been so fun to have to organize, is our governance training. As you know, we have allocated funds in our budget, $20,000 for a contract with Virginia School Board Association to do for training sessions. Two of those days are two-day training sessions, two of those sessions are one-day training sessions. The V S B A has, basically has a formula of when they, you know, suggest that we try to get the trainings done and the timeframe. And so it was certainly a challenge of trying to adjust everyone's calendar around an ideal and optimal training time in July. And so we, we couldn't get everyone's consensus on a, on a date for that. Also, let me back up for a second. Per the V S B A policy, all seven board members have to be present in order for the training to occur. If one board member chooses not to attend, the training is canceled. It doesn't occur. It's not scheduled, it's canceled. Done. So in moving forward, so that we honor our contractual commitment with V S B A, we have to dedicate two full, four sessions in total. Gina and I and Samantha have been in contact numerous times on dates. Let's just start with the easy ones first. So for session two, we have October 18th and 19th to be done in Charlottesville. That's going to count as a two-day session. Session three, originally, based on the dates that the V S B A had sent to us, they had shared with us some dates. And in looking at how everyone's schedule looked, it looked like February 31st and January 1st were the most ideal times. Okay? Those were dates sent by V S B A.
Wait, what was that again?
January 31st.
January 31st and February 1st. Okay. So we responded back to V S B A saying those dates work for us. They then responded back to us and said, oops, we are actually at the Equity Conference at N S B A at that time. We cannot do those dates. But the other dates that we had provided to you for January are still on the table. So at that time.
What are those dates?
Hold on a second, let me finish. Ms. Tanner and I pulled back the original calendar and we said, all right, let's try for January 24th or 20, 24th and 25th because that was the other date that the majority of board members could attend. As soon as we had sent that information out, the V S B A then emailed us back and said, we are only available on, what was the date, Ms. Tanner? It was only one of those days.
24th, 25th.
It, it was just one of those days. So we are back to the drawing board now as far as a January date. We have sent out an email, Ms. Tanner has sent out an email and have asked for you all to respond to say what dates you are available. Again, we are working on the V S B A's timeframe because they're the ones doing the training. And so, Ms. Smith, to answer your question, the 24th and 25th is not possible right now because there's only one of those dates available. I, Ms. Tanner basically copied the exact dates that they gave us and sent them out to everybody. And so what we need to, um, come to an agreement on is what are the dates in January that we can attend for that third session?
But it says or, not both.
I want you to just.
Neither one of those days?
Well, honestly, the email that, that was sent out, the most recent one by Ms. Tanner, has all of the dates listed. So that way, if those aren't even options, this is, this is, this is, this is like, you may not even be able, you don't even consider that right now, just draw a line through it.
That was such a good day for me.
So what are the dates that we have, that they're offering us?
Ms. Tanner, do you have that email? I know you had sent it out to us.
Just for clarity, so of the four training, is, it's two of them that are two days and two that are one day, is that right?
Yes.
So, because typically, is that right? Is it, I can't remember. You have the contract.
So could one of those two days become one of the one-day training?
Okay, here are the dates.
You have the dates.
You got, okay.
All right, so it's January fifteenth, sixteenth, January sixteen, seventeenth, January seventeenth, eighteenth, January twenty-fifth, or January thirtieth, thirty-first.
I thought the twenty-fifth was still on the table.
So the twenty-fifth would be a one-day one?
It would only be a one-day training.
While everyone's looking, could I ask, you started with session two and session three, session one is?
I'm gonna come back to what's going on with session one.
Oh, okay, okay. I can do everything but the eighteenth, which I guess I could try and change if it was the last thing for everyone to go with. I would try and make arrangements to change it. So I'll just open myself to any of them. We really need to get this scheduled.
And so thi- this is what was sent out to everyone to comment on, and then we can take it from there.
Could we like just go down the list, or if I could say, and we could see if everyone could go to that one? And if they can't, we could go to the next one and?
It is, it is, it was, it was out there. So I'm happy to nail down a date right now.
Yes.
Um, and that way we have a date, but I, I, I also do understand that folks are looking at their calendars. But we did send this email out. And I know that it has been confusing, but we are just, we're, we're working with the V S B A and what their schedule is.
Can we just, I wanna get out of here, so, I mean, like, it's getting late. Um, and we still have a lot of business to do, just have everyone email. Ms. Tanner, I already emailed her.
Yep.
And then she can tell us.
If we went for it real fast, then we'd be finished. This email back and forth business isn't seeming to work with us with the scheduling.
It doesn't.
We could all write here, sitting here and say, what were the first dates that you gave us? Who can go to those two dates?
The fifteenth is a board meeting, so that one's off. So then we just moved, I'm with you, Ms. Kimson, we just moved to the sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteenth, seventeenth?
I can do sixteen, seventeen.
Who can do sixteenth and seventeenth? Raise your hand if you can do sixteenth and seventeenth.
Well, look on the calendar. No, but I have multiple calendars and that's why I'm like, I could guess based on this one here, but I'm just.
Right now, sixteenth and seventeenth will be fine.
I'm open for sixteenth and seventeenth.
I will, I will adjust my schedule to, to, to make it work. Typically, I can't do Thursday and Friday, but, I mean, it's Thursday and a Friday, but. Okay, so I tell you what, if we have consensus right now with the exception of Ms. Martin, okay, well.
I'm looking to see what I sent earlier because I was looking.
Be good to have.
You said no for the eighteenth and the thirty-first.
So we don't have to be doing it.
I said no.
You said no for the eighteenth and the thirty-first.
Okay.
Okay, so sixteenth and seventeenth, you're good for.
So then, so then let's just book the sixteenth and seventeenth then.
Session three.
Session three, yep.
Sixteenth and seventeenth.
Ms. Tanner, can you please email V S B A by tonight and let them know the sixteenth and seventeenth just in case another board member, I mean, another board takes training that day? All right. And then session four, we have April twenty-ninth. Okay, so we have in agreement sessions two, three, and four.
What was, what was February again?
Eight, session four is April twenty-ninth. It's a one-day training.
Got a calendar invite.
Okay.
Samantha? So we're having January?
We have, we have October eighteenth and nineteenth, we have January sixteenth and seventeenth, and April twenty-ninth. So right now, we have two two-day sessions and one one-day session right now. Okay.
We just need to get one day.
Take it one step at a time. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm rounding back to the session one, okay? Session one, um, we put out a bunch of dates. Um, we were trying to figure out a date that worked best for everybody. And the reason that you have training early on, uh, in the board, ideally in July, is so that you can come together to discuss topics such as your norms or protocols, review the accountability plan, um, do a data review, um, lo- lots of organizational matters. Um, we couldn't all come together for July. And so the next best option on the doodle poll, um, was the August twelfth and thirteenth timeframe. Now, um, I know that, um, Ms. Smith, you, you, you could not attend, um, that meeting and I understand. The what?
I'm in training that day.
You're in training that day. So, um, you know, when, when we put out the other information for the other dates, um, that you were available, we didn't have, um, board, um, there weren't, all the board members could not attend those dates either. And so we have to move on training. Uh, and this is important information that we have to, to make a priority for us, for our board. And so we are moving ahead with training on August the twelfth and the thirteenth. Um, it will be at the Richmond Marriott in Shore Pump. We have a facilitator, uh, Dr. Warren Stewart will be facilitating the training. He is a former board member with Norfolk Public Schools. He is a, uh, former superintendent. He, um, has experience with Virginia Department of Education, um, facilitating, um, uh, strategic planning, uh, commu- uh, communication facilitation, all of that. And so he is, uh, very, um, excited to be, uh, providing, um, in the role of facilitator um, for us, um, at this, uh, training session, this governance training. So that's what will occur.
So how much is that going to cost the board?
Zero.
Okay.
We will be providing his lodging and mileage.
Okay.
So that costs?
So I'm, just for clarity, because I'm like, Ms. Martin, I'm tired. Um, um, you had mentioned a second ago that we would do things such as review the accountability plan and that stuff. That's work session stuff, that's not governance training stuff.
No, no, no. In the past, in the past, what we had done in July is we were, you know, we had those two days. Like, what I remember from Panasonic was we did like data review, needs assessment and.
Panasonic since, uh, two thousand twelve.
I'm just saying.
Last year we had two days.
You're right, accountability plan is not governance training.
Let's just go last year, we had two days. Right, July, we had two days.
We had a day and a half.
For governance training. She says a point.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just trying to get an understanding of what it is, is being proposed to be done on the twelfth and the thirteenth.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, uh, you, you just mentioned Dr. Stewart was doing it. But I was confused about, you say he was facilitating. I'm trying to get an understanding, what is, what is he facilitating?
Ms. Tanner, is the agenda for that up, uh, online on Board Docs?
Yeah, hold on one second.
The first day, um, is norms and protocols. The second day is superintendent and board members' needs and wants.
Okay.
So although I'm not going to be present, I'd still like to provide input into, uh, some of that.
Okay. So on that, um, and I can't see it very clearly from here. What I, I did ask, um, uh, Ms. Tanner to, um, provide and upload, um, as a part of that, um, are our current norms and protocols, um, Dr. Stewart's biography, okay? Um, eight traits of a, um, effective school board, eight characteristics of an effective school board. And, Ms. Tanner, was there anything else to upload to that for our conversation?
I'll look and I'll make sure it gets up there.
Okay.
Yeah, preferably an outline.
Of this training, yeah.
That's the agenda. Okay. Ms. Sam.
So. An outline of the training. So I share, I share my concerns, uh, with you, um, and Dr. Birdsong. I, I wholeheartedly, there's a reason why V S B A has a full-board participation policy. I firmly believe in that. I think that if that's what we're doing in our, uh, if those are the topics that are being covered, that we can do that as a whole at a, at a different time. And we're, I don't agree with that. And because I feel that way about Ms. Smith and having, whether it's Ms. Smith or anyone here, uh, who couldn't make it to the meeting, I too said that I was not going to attend the meeting. And I still feel that way based on, um, the information since we're learning. I did learn from Dr. Birdsong that, uh, Dr. Stewart was being considered, uh, to facilitate. Um, but the full board has not been made abreast of the training, what's gonna be entailed. I mean, I, I think at some point, we gotta get to a process where we're being informed of the matters before us.
Beforehand.
Yeah, beforehand. Um, so I'm staying, I stand firm with, with my conviction on that and.
So are you still not gonna?
I, I continue to not plan to be there.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't think it's right, yeah.
Okay, so.
There's nothing that I can do. I've tried emails, um, I've tried to align calendars. Um, we had a training back in April that was canceled last minute. Um, we have to make a commitment and I, I, we have to get work done. Um, and if we push it out to September, October, we're going to be dealing with the same issues that we were dealing with last year and we have to move on from this, so.
Can I make a point, Madam Chair? I think for full clarity and just transparency on it, we had dates that were given out way ahead about a time in July that our board chair took on a consideration, because I do know that, um, I think, Ms. Smith, you were, had a conflict. Ms. Sam, you had a conflict.
No, I did not have a conflict.
To do the second day?
Oh, to do the first day I did.
To do the first one, so.
Yes, right?
We were trying to have full board there to try to get this done. We had to do an organizational meeting. This is supposed to typically happen in July. Last year, we did two days.
Yeah.
Um, and we took on a consideration at that particular point in time to make an adjustment because of board members' conflicts. We have been back and forth through emails, trying to get things done. The, there are several things that we just can't put off until September and October again. And that's what we're looking at now here in August. I, I feel that, um, I mean, I understand what you're saying in the respect and, and I'm not gonna say that I don't take what you're stating at, to value, I, I do. But I, I just have a challenge in the respect that we are trying to make adjustments. We have a contract with V S B A that says we have to have a hundred percent participation with everybody. Clearly, we're not gonna get that for this first one, but there are things that have to get done. Um, and so being able to go out and identify another trainer, someone who can be able to get that because we have things that we have to get done, um, that's not costing the district anything, um, and to be there. Um, I would really employ you as a colleague on this board. I understand what you're standing for, but I would really encourage you to be a part of that because we don't want you not to be a part of it and we do value your opinion and your, uh, and what you have to say at the table and for you to really participate in being a part of the governance. I understand what Ms. Smith has, she can't control that, um, and it shouldn't be any slighter at all. Um, and I do, you know, hope that we will do what we can do to ensure that her, um, feedback, um, is considered and is included in what we're talking about. But I would really encourage you, um, as we try to move forward as a unit, a governance team. I understand and taking under control, uh, you know, full consideration about what you're saying for your, your colleague there, but we really need to have your voice at the table and we, and I would really encourage you to be a part of it.
Right, um, so, so that we can go ahead and move things along, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into closed session.
Now, before that, the agenda as we normally see it wasn't on Board Docs. Is that a change too that has taken place?
You're talking about?
Which agenda?
Under the executive sec- section, um.
Are you talking about like this?
Yeah.
Like this agenda? This, this? This is what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. Are we changing that?
No, I don't think we change it. I think that we still have a clerk that's, uh, that's learning and cheating.
It's just a regular, if you click like print, it gives you the detailed agenda and a simple agenda on Board Docs.
I agree with Ms. Tanner. I think the, the use of those PDFs is legacy and a holdover and isn't necessary. That's why we have Board Docs. And on the Board Docs thing, I did, are we still, did notifications get turned off?
And if that's the case, Mr. Jordan, then we just need to say that.
I mean, she's talking.
If, if we're accustomed to a certain norm and that's what we're used to seeing, if we're gonna change it, then we just need to say that that's what we're gonna do.
No, I agree with you. Yeah. I think for that very reason, because.
Well, I wasn't aware that everyone was, that you all were getting color copies. Only certain individuals asked for those and I did that. But I just know that if you click on print, you get the simple and detailed agendas and, you know. But if that's what you want, I can do that.
Okay.
We'll talk about it.
Sure.
So I know that we're in, um, board member matters and we're about to go into closed session, but there are two quick things and I think we've sent emails on them, but I just wanted to make sure that for full board, uh, notification of what I'm requesting. I know that a parent had contacted about Blair Middle School and it's come up several times before about their specialty program and how that's the only program in the district that doesn't provide transportation. And I really, um, implore the administration to try to really look at that. I know we've asked the prior superintendent to look at that, um, as to how we might be able to potentially, you know, the smaller group. But something to come back to us, um, about that.
So respectfully, um, we can do that, but I do recall that that was a discussion during the, the budget cycle that was put on the table, but that was never put into the budget.
Okay. Is there anything that we potentially do within our budget? Um, I understand, I know Ms. Kleinbauer's talked about it, I've heard about a hundred and seventy-some odd drivers. Um, but just to have another look at it that doesn't have a public budget implication to us. And you can just say yea or nay when it comes back to it.
I'm not sure how it wouldn't have a budget implication.
I mean, I just, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question?
And then they just.
Say, you know, we don't philosophically agree with it.
No, I understand.
But at this point, to my understanding, there was a discussion about it, but there was an agreement to put it in the budget. And so it's not in our cu- current budget.
Got it. And the second item was about, um, Jaco's Elementary, um, the bus loop that's come in there. Um, I know that's gone to the city and so forth about some type of putting a fencing or some temporary, um, fencing there to prevent students from coming across, um, then an active kind of driveway. So, and, and I know that you all work on it, but I just want it for the full board to understand that, um, you know, as, as I was, sent emails, that you all were aware.
Can I, real quick, and I should have noticed this before, but we, of course, when we go in closed session, we'll be approving person, we'll be looking at personnel and we need to, to vote on that.
Yes.
So those people can staff the schools and we don't, we have to come out of closed session to vote?
Yes.
Okay, because I didn't see it here. So we will be coming out, because I know we gotta get the schools staffed.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna come out of retirement.
Okay.
Yeah, it does.
All right, can I have a motion to enter into closed session?
I'm with you to enter closed session.
Second?
Okay. Ms. Tanner? I'm sorry, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Sam.
Um, I'd like some clarification why the, uh, preliminary accreditation of schools is in closed session.
Okay.
A closed session item.
Um, when we, when we start talking about particular schools, there may be the possibility of talking about individuals and we don't want to single that out. So it becomes a personnel.
We've never done, I'm sorry.
The what?
Go ahead.
Well, we've never reached over into that type of conversation before when we've, um, had presentations of school accreditation.
We.
I think it's better to be on the safe side than not. And we, we, because you can also, there's only a certain number of high schools, certain number of middle schools and you get into a certain thing, people can start kinda guessing where they are. So it's just a, it's a safe way of being able to make sure that we're protecting personnel.
And this is preliminary.
And it's preliminary because it's not a final thing.
Public reporting at some point.
Preliminary right now.
Right, so why not discuss it when it's either in a two-by-two as we've done before or in a, uh, when it is ready, when it is a finalized.
We had two-by-twos already when it wasn't finalized.
It did, but I mean, to have this piece, uh, if that's something, and we have had two-by-twos, you're right. So I guess I'm wondering, is there already a planned personnel discussion assist-
So I guess I'm wondering, is there already a planned personnel discussion associated with this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because if there isn't, then I think we all know that, um, you know, and if you have somebody sent something-
I was just going to add that, you know, we were asked to um look at some- some data that is confidential in nature and connected to personnel. So we do have those reports, um, so it-
So you were asked to look at some personnel-specific information related to this?
That together, we would be looking at um some personnel information.
Some of, some of we don't know what that is.
Yeah, so I don't know that, so that's why I'm asking for that.
And I did respond to your email.
Right.
About that.
But, but then, but then uh there was a follow-up email saying that we weren't having a-
We don't do evaluations of, right, and I don't want to even go down that path.
I think the implication was understood why I was asking it. If there was a personnel
Sure.
uh discussion related to it, that's a different topic than just presenting us with the preliminary results.
I think with all of these matters, we come- we come to- to making the agenda as citizens of the community. We have an attorney that works with um the board, Mr. Cloud, who um really gives us the legal counsel as to what we can and cannot bring into closed session. And there is no um rebuttal whatsoever. If Dr- if Mr. Cloud says this is not appropriate for closed session, it is off the table, we follow his lead. Um, if he says, I advise that this be a closed session discussion because of the potential for uh personnel matters to be discussed, et cetera, we follow his lead. And so, uh, that's, the- we're- we're following um direction as that goes, so if there's anything.
Yeah, well, this goes back to what I was taking off earlier. So the uh attorneys provide us legal advice. They're not board members, they're not elected. There's a, whatever reason, we decided as a board that we wanted to have this uh review of preliminary accreditation now. I'm not aware of, once we get the information, that we're going to do anything with it. But I think the- the better approach is to either have the two-by-two or discuss the information when it is no longer embargoed and is available, and have a full work session discussion that talks about where we are and what we're going to do. I think otherwise, putting it on the agenda in the closed session as we have now, when there's, at least I'm not clear on any recommended action that we would take as a board tonight anyway. I just think that there's a better process for sharing this information with board members, if board members feel it's important at this time, than to uh put the administration in a position of trying to do it this way. I just, I just don't think that is uh, uh, a good process, whether it is legal or not.
Okay, okay. Alright.
So I would, I don't recommend that we keep it on the closed session agenda for this evening.
Is there anybody else that would like to amend the motion to remove it from closed session?
No, I- I trust in what Dr. Berthong said. I mean, I- I wasn't involved in the agenda planning, so I think that I'm going to lean on her.
Okay.
Her recommendation is.
So if we are not making, um, if there's going to be no action um around uh the discussion that we're having, then um if- if there is a need, I am happy to schedule two-by-twos with individual board members. If you want to um have a- a deeper discussion about um the status of schools as it relates to accreditation, um, we can provide the data, but it is preliminary, and I want to say that again, it is preliminary, and it may change. It may change. So we just need to be very careful about um the data that you receive if you decide to move forward with it today, because again, it is preliminary data.
I'll just add to that, because it's preliminary accreditation data that can change, that to have that announced publicly early before, because we don't have any- any input into accreditation. That's a formula that the state uses, it's a state designation. The two-by-twos we had earlier gave us preliminary data that we have, you know, to talk about and everything, because we weren't making any labeling of school decisions.
Right.
So this is a labeling of school, which is why the state asks us not to make public accreditation until they finish crunching the numbers and release it in September sometime. But they have released preliminary stuff, is my understanding, to the district. And if I'm wrong, but that was always my understanding of how it worked, is the big thing was the fact that accreditation can hinge on some piece coming in later, because things happen in summer school and- and other things, and so they ask us not to make it public until it's, am I correct in what I'm saying, Dr. Berthong?
Yes, there- there has been a timeline that has been provided, and then an update to the timeline.
Okay.
And we are ahead of that timeline. And so again, um, if you want the data, it is preliminary, and- and it could change. And I suspect that it will.
So being that we are, um, we are well into the seven o'clock hour, and since there is some unrest with board members with having this discussion, and I would not want to rush this discussion, um, because it is so important, such a big part of what we do, I'm- I'm comfortable removing it from the consent agenda, and let's just stick with the personnel items and the legal matters. I- I hope that's a, I think that's a good compromise then.
And we can touch base with you to schedule a two-by-two time?
Yes.
Okay.
What?
So we have it, because it's on Board Docs now, right?
Yeah, okay. Alright, so can I have a uh motion to enter into closed session with the-
Motion's already on the floor, so um strike the um accreditation discussion from the um resolution.
And there was a second?
Yep.
And if we could call?
Okay, move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session are consideration of the personnel docket of this date, including the dis- discussion of the board's appointment of a specific candidate for a high-level administrative position, and discussion of the performance of and possible future board actions concerning specific school-based administrative personnel. Discussion or consideration of disciplinary and other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic rest record pursuant to subsection two of the above cited code section. The subject of this portion of the session is consideration of the funding and awarding of scholarship to specific students, consultation with legal counsel, and briefings, excuse me, by staff members pertaining to actual probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection seven and eight of the above cited code section. The subjects of this section of the motion are consultation with legal counsel concerning legal matters related to the personnel and student support matters identified above, and consultation with legal counsel and or briefings of staff members concerning probable litigation and legal matters related to a specific employee's threatened lawsuit. Ms. Basine?
Aye.
Camson? Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.